You know that little thing I had in mind to put my feet on? Remember?
Mm-hmm.
I need that.
That's the problem of being short.
One has an agenda in front of him. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
It is. On the consent agenda, I have two pre-authorization requests for the credit card. One from Clark County District Court. Our new machine does not allow Clark County District Court to do heavy boxes. So she just needs permission to use the credit card when she has to run across and use it to mail heavier things. And then I have a request. When we have to get the supplies for this machine, we have to do it with a credit card. And it's anytime. I just want to blanket permission when we have to get the supplies for it. We cannot get it locally. And I need to remove the treasurer's report because he's just not ready with that this time.
Any other changes?
I would like to pull the chairman's signature on the rental agreement or consent agenda for further discussion.
Oh, for the annex?
Western County Annex, yeah.
Any other changes, Mr. Huber?
Are we talking about just the consent agenda or the agenda in total?
Yeah, just the agenda.
I'd like to just discuss a little bit Title 25.
Under...
I guess that would be Old Business.
Under Old Business, I'd like to have a conversation on adding to the agenda again. You have anything else to the agenda? Okay. To approve the agenda as changed. Second. The motion prop is seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. You will work on the doctors. Okay, next up is the, we pulled the rental agreement for the Western County Annex.
Couple of things I wanted to talk about on that one. We did make a motion at our last meeting for the acceptance of $400 for the rental of that office space. After further considering it, I feel like we need to revisit this. For one, I don't know if it's a legal thing that we can rent that portion out to. Interestingly enough, our legal advisor is the individual that we're renting to. For one, I was questioning it at first. I had to go down and look at the square footage of it. First off, I was questioning the amount in which we were renting it for. But I think above and beyond that, I don't know if a personal practice of any sorts would be appropriate to rent that. I don't know. When we have projects, we purposely put them out for bid so there's an opportunity and there's a lot of transparency on the bid process. And even if it were legal for us to rent that office space out to a personal practice, I feel like the county is favoring that business by not making that available to other businesses. Those are my concerns with the rental agreement.
Last week, or two weeks, I made a mistake of stating that they'd gone out and gotten a quote around town. Alex initially, I believe it was 600 instead of 400 is what he actually got that quote for. And then for some reason or another, we dropped it because Focus, I think, was having some financial issues with 400. So I think the initial deal that Alex found was 600 was more closely related to ballpark price for renting that.
Are we positive that it is a legal rentable space to a private practice? I know Focus was a nonprofit.
Honestly, I couldn't answer that because we would take advice from our attorney on that. He's not here today.
I realize that.
So that's...
I'm a little concerned, but another thing is I have been contacted by a few constituents that were concerned. They were wanting some information that I didn't, that I couldn't present to them on a legal status.
Mr. Huber?
After we discussed it and kind of agreed on it, I'm a little bit like Garrett. I had some, I was second guessing it a little bit because it's a private practice and not in any way, you know, connected to the county or like a nonprofit. The other thing I got thinking about is that space, if we needed that space for the county, say if we ever could afford to get somebody to work as a human resources person or, you know, that would be space perhaps that we need for something else in the future that we have tied up with a private practice. And I got to thinking about that, that maybe we should think about that a little bit.
After listening, I agree with Commissioner Horton. The other concern that I got to think about afterwards is how do you measure, for example, you know, between private practice office supplies and county supplies? I mean, how are we, not that you would or not suggesting that you would, but for example, just simple copy paper or things that are bought for the county usage? How is that not mixed and mingled with private practice things, which is another concern? I mean, they're getting those things and it's not including, I mean, you're getting that space including utilities and all those things. I think there needs to be a little bit more measured control over that because, like I said, not to say it's accidental, but I mean, it's bound to, it seems like almost bound to happen. You're not going to sit there and count why I used 39 pieces of paper from the county and I used 41 for my private practice. So how is that being controlled and monitored?
You were all very good concerned, I mean, viable concerns that we need to probably address. Without him being here, we probably should table it so that would...
I agree with that as well. First off, I would like to stair step of the process. I'd like to make sure that we can legally do that. And then if it does fall into a legal status that we can, I would like to revisit the rental amount on that space.
Having said that, and I'm up here, I think it's a good idea to table it, but I would like to see a formal letter written by the board requesting at least some legal counsel here for the meetings because we get that more than not. And we have several legal representatives in the county that we pay for that we should be able to get somebody here for a meeting twice a month. So, I mean, we've asked for it before, but I think a formal letter requesting it would be appropriate.
Who would be the letter that we would, aside from Michael, where would that counsel be coming from?
Well, we could either have...
Jimmy Stone?
Or either we have two deputy attorneys or a county attorney.
Michael, give us advice on that.
Well, with that, I guess the way that would work is we'd actually, clerk Hadlock draft a letter up and we'd sign it.
We're talking about two different things, I think.
Requesting that president here at all meetings.
I would move to request that letter from our clerk.
All in favor of signature, this is chairman. If we all vote on it, signature would be fine. Second. The motion prop is seconded to have clerk Hadlock draft a letter requesting legal counsel in our meetings with the chairman's signature. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, opposed, say nay. Sitting on the rental agreement. Should have a motion to table it.
Sorry.
Second. The motion prop is seconded to table the rental agreement and put it under Old Business for our next meeting. Is there any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Okay, next up is public comment. Do you have a public comment? Jim?
Hi, I'm Stanley Chisinski, downstairs. I just wanted to touch a little bit on what was just discussed when it came up two weeks ago. I had a problem with it and some of it's going to address the rental and for that space is a difference as well, but I think it's a conflict of interest personally. I think one of the reasons Attorney Stokan said he wouldn't like that office is because he'd need to be near to his Western County Attorney's Office. You know, he may or may not be attorney, county attorney for a long time, or he might be for a short time. So that makes it irrelevant. I think it's a conflict of interest. I think it gives him, advertising his attorney's office out of the Western County Annex more power over other attorneys because, look at, I'm approved by the county. Look at, I'm right here in the courthouse. It gives him most legitimacy that he wouldn't normally have. And the rent's too low and it shouldn't happen anyway. The other thing is, you know, so I'm just saying, I'm opposed to Attorney Stokan being able to have his private practice there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Any other public comments? Set forward station.
Hi, again, I'm Sandy Stevens. I am the director of New York, which is Northeast Wyoming Advocacy and Resource Center that we took over Focus. And Focus has this off the third week of August. And so we are now official. And I wanted to invite you all to our open house, which is going to be this Thursday from 3:30 to 5:30. And I apologize for not getting on your guys' agenda. So Becky informed me I could talk really quick during your guys' public comment. So with that, we are actually asking you guys to see if we could go in and paint the walls. There's some pretty big stuff up on the wall, some little tiny holes where the previous employees there have a lot of wall hangings and whatnot, sort of the depression of the walls. And at some point in time, if possible, we'd like to change out the carpet. It's green and like burgundy color right now. We'd like to go in and put some granite flooring in there. And when I looked at the lease agreement, it stated that we need to help board to ask your guys' permission and that we would take on that expense of any type of influence of those two office spaces.
Senior, want permission now to paint?
Yes.
The board's place. If it's a dirt, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If it's a dirt, expense, I have no issue with it. We should have...
I should add too that there's wallpaper on one wall in each room. We need to take down that wallpaper.
I was wondering, where is the expense going to, who's paying for the expenses? Either the paint or the removal of the wallpaper?
New York, though. We've got some money in our, just question and plans to be able to do.
Because she wasn't on the agenda, can we make that decision?
I don't get a problem with it. It gives us no expense out of ours. It's in their rental agreement. It's there and we are not going to be carrying any expense to the county.
Mr. Huber?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to allow New York to remove the wallpaper, paint the walls and replace the carpeting, as long as it's done in a professional manner. It doesn't devalue property law.
Second. A motion properly seconded to allow New York to do improvements to the office space they're renting, as long as it doesn't take away from the value of the building. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hopefully we'll see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is... We have the board, Jim.
Timberline is going to start a new road project.
Jim, I'm going to have you, ask you to speak up a little bit because they have trouble with people watching, hearing you. Very self-spoken.
My son Timberline's going to start a new road project. It's Monday, but like, the new line should be here Thursday. Take a peek at it. We've been mowing gravel, the mallow road, it should be done today. We've been doing a little bit of work, County Triangle River Road project. I offered to buy water for the project, for my carers, and please donate the water to us. I was planning to advertise for contract trucks. I think it'll start in October. Soon as I start trucks, maybe in November, I'd advertise for three weeks. Sounds agreeable? I'm advertising on papers. Talking with contractors, I think, going rate here around 135 an hour. It's kind of these asphalt companies are paying.
That's the one rate. If that much amount of gravel you have to get hold, you guys can't get it done in that short a time.
I'll probably keep an eye on the fuel prices to make sure it's down a little bit. We were going to take that bridge out, out of Christiansen's, and we take some of the culverts this fall. I was going to visit you guys about maybe delaying that a year so we could do some earthwork down on that Triangle River Road. To get a scrape for down there, a bunch of work cut out before we put gravel on it. It's not my new way of doing it, the way it is with the new ones.
You're the expert on roads more than we are.
You know, we could try to do road projects, but that'd be all we could down this fall. Not take every W2000 projects.
Do you feel the bridge is okay for you to be here?
We got another way out.
Oh, yeah. Looks like that doesn't become an issue.
Updated on, you know, if that says that bridge changes something, what we need to do for it? Let us know.
I was going to ask if you guys would be interested in taking a toll on some of those roads down on that stuff area. There's some of them that need a lot of work, but I think it'd be a good idea for you guys to put your eyes on them rather than just take a lot of work for it. Be kind of helpful.
I would be.
Looking at down there.
Be interested in that.
I'll be seeing you.
Could you be asked for this thing?
Yeah.
Then just ask the kind of the roads to... Drive along.
As I said, I can...
Yeah, I was going to say, you're in the aspect.
Did you guys get the email I sent you?
I missed one.
Yeah, the other side, I'm interested. Guys have any questions on...
Were we, was weed up grilling on the shoulder? How are they going to, are they going to work very good pulling that up?
Well, we talked to Morgan, you know, they have one in Kirk County. And he said they usually end up having to run one of their mulchers over it anyway. That stuff never works as good as the videos. I think that definitely helped. Something to think about.
I've actually seen back in Iowa down there, it is in fall to turn, everything's so white and so, most of a lot of their county roads are paved. There's about a three-foot section right at the edge of the road that gets mashed down. Before winter comes, they come along with this, it's a disc on the side. They have one actual blade that rolls gravel back up. They run a wheel packer across it, blade it and then sweep it all in, like four trucks, four pieces of equipment. There, there's no grass and stuff, but I just can sort of with the grass, you know, how it would work?
I mean, I think it helps break it up, you know, if it's more to a, it's from a knot over and a cordon, but we can tease it and do it and just what you can sell.
Which one of these two quotes do you lean towards?
Well, the one that mounts the motor grader would be a lot handier for us than to go with one guy, you know, use a tractor, I think you've got to have two guys to help that weight there anyway.
Would you be looking for approval for purchase or...
Both quotes here, Jim, essentially do the same thing. They're just different amount. One amounts to a tractor, the other one's a grader mount.
Yeah.
Okay.
I could see the validity in putting on the grader one, it's multiple pieces of equipment. You've already got it, you're already in your motor grader anyway, so it will reduce travel time trying to get equipment there, so. The tractor's also lighter, so it probably would do as well as the grader would in those areas, in my opinion, but... The one on the blade, it actually mounts a throttle, they put the big snow...
Yeah, Houston, Houston, it's like a snow ring, but now it's the front cones.
So you can actually run the disc and blade in the same path. What kind of, oh, sorry, what kind of maintenance does it require?
I'm not sure.
Probably grease.
I wouldn't have it, it looks like, I should probably... Places hydraulic hose and some things. After that, it looks like it's pretty simple. It is.
You have money to buy the fork?
I don't have spend right now. Know where we are.
Would you want to just table this one out?
Yeah. Just keep it moving. It's up to us to be provided by us. I'll just send that now.
Thank you, good work, listen, see what kind of wire we have. If you guys run a lot of trucks on county roads, that's what sure knocks the gravel off.
Well? Any questions? Anyone have any questions for Jim? I'm staying on vacation this week. Thanks for coming on your day off.
Thanks, Jim.
Give up the good work, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, liaison support discussion, Mr. Mills. Good morning. You have your...
I'd be delighted to start the morning. I don't quite understand why it's so cheap to get on the agenda. It only cost me a hundred bucks to get the position I'm in.
Don't be saying that.
Darn it, I'm just kidding. Look at that. What, dolly? Anyway, thanks for letting me be here, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I read a few days ago the newspaper about the idea of a liaison officer showing up at board meetings and special district meetings and all of that. I don't think we need to go there. I don't think the system's broke. I think we need to encourage boards to show up here so that all of us that are serving or want to serve can come and listen and we get better acquainted with everybody. I think the underlying issue is that the system's fine, it's just not being used. And I don't think another layer of bureaucracy would actually solve the problem. Commissioner Huber indicates that some people she's talked to are complaining about not knowing enough of what's going on or is going on. I respectfully suggest to all of them, including me, that we get up off our butts and come here and find out what's going on. Or go to those meetings. I don't think it would be that cumbersome to do this because I think we could come in and offer a short scenario of what's been going on, good things, excuse me, good things or bad things. And if I start waving my hands. I used to have a nephew that when he wanted your attention, "I tell you," and he wrinkled his eyebrows, and so here we go. "I tell you." Okay, anyway, bottom line. To close my remarks. I would be willing to commit the museum district board. If you want to put us on the agenda and hear from us, that we would come to a meeting. You would obviously have some time, sometimes you're gonna have things that need to be done that maybe are more important. But the bottom line is, we can come in and do a five, maybe seven minute dissertation about where we are, what we have, what we're doing, what we expect to have happen. One of the things that comes to my mind that needs to be laid out there is where all this stuff with taxes are gonna go. This could have a major impact on all of us that are funded by mill levies. And so, one minute we look like we might be fat, the next minute we might not be. It might be chicken one day and feathers the next. So regardless of that, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to at least give this some consideration and see where we go with it, but I do wanna let you know that we would commit, we want to be open. People know what our meetings are. The other thing is in defense of people that don't go to meetings, you know, I'm one of them. When I vote for you, using this commission as a group. I vote for the people that I think are gonna best represent me, and I don't need to look over their shoulder, so. There's, to protect some of us that look like we may be complacent, it's, we don't need to be there because you're gonna take care of things. So anyway, that's the end of my little spiel. And I wanted to show you this, I wanted to make sure you saw that, I brought my notebook. It's a big deal. Darn it. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, that ends my remarks, thanks again, and I yield whatever time I have left back to you, sir.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Mills? No question, come in.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike, we will take into consideration comments.
On the time comes.
Next, Mr. Jenkins.
No.
Gentlemen?
How's it going?
Oh, horse today.
No. Of course, it's a wreck. So, a couple of things, I want to introduce Jason Jenkins, the new jail administrator. Yeah, he's regretting every minute that he took over for Dean Emmerich. He's recently been promoted to lieutenant. He is doing a good job, he's also oversees on court security stuff, transports. The other thing, what it specifically says on there, I think is budget amendment. Before we even knew for sure what our budget was, we'd already went through our medical jail apple. I think in the past, incredibly from how back here, we just kind of run that, and so I wanted to towards the end of the fiscal year, ask for that budget amendment. But I did want to, because now the best you got to handle that. Would it be better to? I don't know.
Never been one to advise anyone.
No, it happened in one, one transport, so.
And that's, and that's why, like, like the sheriff said, basically, you know, I was talking with Becky, and she said typically that's how we've done it in the past, was just at the end, just do one big, big budget, but I'll twofold introduce myself again and then see how you guys would like, like me to proceed with.
The concern about doing that, it's awful really, and like it's like to start going in the red, and it's not that that's a big deal, but then that could potentially be a big surprise for you to find. So that's your pleasure.
I guess.
The hard part is for us, is that is absolutely a forecast. I have no way of knowing what we're gonna get, won't be enough to anticipate. A lot of things we can kind of forecast this one. We could spend, we could spend literally nothing the next nine months.
That was a guessing game.
I know it's a guessing game, Brian, but do I have any idea of what type of an adjustment you're forecasting?
No, it would be, again, your pleasure.
Just so you guys know, he's already a thousand over. And we're only one to two.
You know, we typically always do that at the end, I guess. Keep an eye on this, I mean, that's my thoughts, is keep an eye on this, you know, and if it kind of stays there in the next month or two, just keep an eye on it, and if it starts getting out of hand.
I just was a little more concerned about the surprise this time around, than we have been in the past. I want you guys to be aware of where we're at.
And I have no issue every three months or whatever you guys need, just to kind of give you a heads up on, hey, this is where I'm sitting at this, at this quarter, whatever. That's it, you tell me what you, what you need for it.
Now, it's kind of my thought, is like a quarterly update on it.
Absolutely.
That way we can prepare or plan.
Okay.
Whatever we need to do to try to minimize the.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
The shock value at the end.
Okay, I think that's it. Any questions? So much point of the sheriff's department.
No, we definitely have to bring them back. We can create a line item, or just put them in financial action, I'm pretty sure. So what happened is the ARPA funds and the tribal funds, we had to dump them into the actual general fund because we did those as unanticipated revenue. So that, those funds are no longer in our budget because they just went into the general fund. So with everything happening right now, we need to put those funds back into our financial admin. So I'll put that back, or should we, should I just do a budget adjustment to put those funds back in and do a resolution against doing it next meeting?
Or even, I'd say, if you could give us an idea, kind of project where we might be, you know, that we can move forward.
Because we have a couple more discussions that are gonna hit that financial admin before the meeting's over.
You're talking about moving all of them back into our tribal?
Well, I can let you guys know how much, because some of, some of the funds were spent.
No, I understand, my thing is, is we can keep some of it, like, in our general fund.
So, so maybe we'll just have a discussion at the next meeting, and then you guys can make the decision of how much to bring in.
Yeah.
So maybe I can have a generic resolution ready for you guys to approve, and we can put that dollar amount in so that the resolution is approved with the dollar amount you guys decide to do after, after you do the discussion.
We may end up using all of it, but as long as it's in general, it's drawn interest, so.
Well, we're gonna deplete most of the financial admin today.
Instead of doing a blanket one resolution, I think it'd be better if we had the discussion. At the next meeting, then at the first meeting next month, and do a resolution. I could be clear. Just keep us updated over that with it, we can keep track of it. Let us know where we're at, we'll keep an eye on it, move forward.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is.
At this time, I will vacate the chair of conflict of interest and move to the other side. I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Todd. And we will update you guys on where we're at and what's going on with this.
So I guess Ed gave me a little update on this. I don't want to come trouble. Basically, what's happening is the solid waste issue, is discovered that they're gonna need to potentially borrow some money. And in order to do that, which has been done before by the board. They need the, I guess, the permission or our approval to allow that to happen from the county commissioners and.
Whereas, we need to borrow money from the bank to match for a grant or project or building. The bank thought we could borrow money, so when we went in there a couple of weeks ago to get things moving, their attorney is like, oh, banks cannot lend special districts money. So there's a way around it, the way they can do it, and it's the museum district has done it in the past, I understand. Basically, we'll draw up a lease, have a lease agreement with the bank. There's two ways we can do this, we can do it, one way with the county commissioner's support, which will get us a lower interest rate by being a tax exempt entity. Or we can do it on our own without the commissioner's approval, which will pay a higher tax rate.
Just to bring you up to.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Bob Hartley.
Thank you.
Just, just to bring you up to speed, when we applied for the grants, those ARPA grants due slipboard. We showed a loan as our match, which at that time, the bank gave us a letter of commitment. And they did not know they couldn't do this until we got down to work with their attorney. They have an attorney, Barbara Bonds, and she's supposed to also be working with the accounting. Now, we won't really need this money until later on, maybe, not even before the first year. We want to get going on it, because we got a whole process to go through, we don't want to get to the end and not have it. We can use the ARPA funds to keep our construction going. So we need, need to keep moving on it, by the way, we're, they're moving dirt. We're building, building the cells and platforming it, so they're, they're making headway, we're making headway out there.
As of today, they're, they're estimating they're at, they're moving average by twelve thousand yards a day. Okay, three weeks of dirt moving.
Wow. What's the difference in the interest rates between these two loans, that one without the commissioner's approval and one with?
One and a half percent is, is what they're estimating, they can't tell you until you get there, that's what they told me about one and a half percent.
The amount we were looking to borrow was like one point nine million. So that, that one and a half percent, that's a big deal. Pull that up, of course. And what we're looking for today is the board's approval, we don't have the paperwork all drawn up yet, we won't know for a while. But which direction, we need the bank to go, whether we have you guys' approval or without your approval.
And the, one of the big items is with the district is holding the tipping fees down. We gotta keep the tipping fees going into that landfill as low as possible to make sure that it's economical for the residents of the whole county. And also, we're anticipating we'll bring in other garbage like Kirk County. So we gotta keep our rate reasonable, and that interest is, we gotta pay it off. It's a business.
Yes, yes.
I was wondering, on this, on this loan that we're needing the one point nine million on, is there a collateral demand or anything on the monies, the loaned monies?
What I understand, with, is basically if we default on this, the bank gets the landfill.
So the property is the one.
Yeah.
If they want a landfill.
I'm sure they want it, but they're gonna want.
I don't think they want it. The loans to the county, or who's the loan to?
To the district, there'll be no financial burden on the county at, at all.
Okay, but they can take, we're using the county landfill for collateral, so they're basically the county beyond the.
That's what they're gonna do originally. This, what it does, it, it doesn't end debt. The solid waste difference for more than a term of one year, which by law, you can't end debt future boards. So it, just do that leasing process, it was something the legislature set up years ago. Unfortunately.
And it kind of lays that out, sorry, I didn't call you here, it was, lays that out in this second paragraph of this proposed structure for the public's project. That it's, that the bank then can, if somehow we default, can lease it to another governmental entity or a private entity. But we do not lose our. What is it called, that during the term? Will not cause a default on the lease agreement.
This, basically, the letter we give you guys is what it is, it's, their attorney's laying out all the state statutes that it's legal, and that's how, how it needs to be done.
Also, another question I had is what monies are we anticipating to repay the one point nine back with?
Combination of our three mills primarily, a portion of that three mills, not all, there's gonna be a portion of that three mills go to indebtedness. And then we'll also use some of our tipping fees, revenue.
Thank you.
We should be in pretty good shape, I mean, everything we've looked at says it will work. If we keep the tipping fees down, we can keep what we have.
So I guess, in your estimation, do you have an estimate as to when this will be paid off? How long it'll take?
Well, we set up the structure originally for fifteen years. But hopefully, it's even done sooner than that. We had to set up for fifteen years.
As a board, we're looking at probably potentially ten years to have paid off, we're gonna set it up for a fifteen year term.
That one point five percent, is that an APR? Or is that?
I believe it's an APR.
It's an annual percentage, okay.
Which, by the way, our interest went from, when we originally did this, went from about four percent to about six and seventeens now, so. We're like everybody else, we gotta call that revolving door.
So with this, with that being said, if, if by this non-default clause, this, they, they will then turn to a different entity to look to lease it, so it doesn't really, this doesn't end debt the county to pay that, that remainder off, correct?
I'm not an attorney, my understanding is that your attorney's gone, that's something your attorney needs to look at. And our attorney, Sundance, is looking to.
Maybe we need to pick Alex to.
That's, that's one thing we tried to say, is we aren't attorneys, you know? So we're, we're happy to lie on that.
Maybe the lease on it would be cheaper. I'm not suggesting that.
How, I mean, what, what is the time structure for this, like the importance of, we got a couple of weeks to get it through to Alex and Mike.
Well, what we're looking for is which direction we need to go, so we can, we have the bank starting on it today.
Okay.
And then the attorney has, has been given our attorney's name and Michael, so she's supposed to be contacting them too.
Is, because the rates are high right now, is this a fixed, is it a fixed rate, or is this variable where it could go down if the rates go down?
Commitment to a fixed rate right now, but it's also on a three-year renewal.
Okay. Okay.
So it can't go down, but it can't go any higher. It's fixed, it's a cooperate, but it can't go down.
Pleasure, the board? For the new business or old business?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking for whether the county would support it so the paperwork can be done to get it processed and we can table it to the next meeting to go over the fine details?
Yeah, the signatures, that's all down. We'll be directed to get the paperwork drawn up.
I personally don't have any problem with supporting it as a county, you know, county loan to lower the interest rate. The one concern that I have is that, I mean, I know this is the property, but I'm sure there's gonna be assets on that property. Is that included? That's the only other question I had is like, equipment, buildings, those type of things. Is that all part of the land? Because I'm sure you're gonna have loaders and dozers and whatever.
It'll be, it'll be the facility.
Okay, so there is assets involved, not just the land?
Yeah. The improvements we put on will be...
They get the liner, the leachate pond.
Well, right, but I'm saying, you're talking dozer, I mean, you're talking substantial more than just the property. You've got the equipment, trucks bringing it in and whatever. So I just was curious.
Sure, get this in front of Alex and...
One more time, just say county attorney.
The county attorney's office, yeah. And...
And I'll reiterate to him, make sure to get a hold of him.
Okay.
I'm sure she probably already has something.
Okay.
That was just my opinion on the county's support.
Yeah, well, as long as the attorney's office had the chance to look at it, what we made a decision about, that's great.
I agree.
You got any other questions about what's going on out there from the board's standpoint? It's, you're moving a lot of dirt, we're spending a lot of money.
Sounds like a dirty job.
Spending a lot of money.
How, what's your timeframe right now?
We're hoping we can get open by first of January. We're hoping, we gotta fingers crossed, we've still got a lot of work to do. To get all the dirt moved in, they gotta bring liners in, and we got sand and gravel.
Right.
We still got that building to build, so we still got a long ways to go.
It's becoming a reality.
It only took 20 years.
Good job.
Thank you.
Let me see the viewers.
Let's see.
Vice Chair Todd.
Brandon. Good morning.
Morning.
How's everybody doing today?
Just great.
So the head unit on the generator at Public Kelt has gone out and they can't replace it. It's an outdated part, no longer manufactured. So I've got one quote from Gin Pro to replace the generator at $10,501.07. And I've also got a call in with Interstate. They're supposed to be giving me a quote to see what they can do as far as getting it replaced.
Have you heard from Barbara Bonds yet? Have you reached out?
I've got a call into them for the last month. They still haven't responded. I'm thinking about getting a different electrician to come look at the light. And I got two lights at Public Kelt because, called them again this morning, left a voice message. I'll see if they return by end of week. If not, I'm gonna start looking for someone else.
We've got the same issues. I'd like...
You got a quote from the local dealer?
I reiterate too that that's, they have a lot of immunizations in refrigerators out there.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go with the vaccine.
Which is kind of sensitive, really critical piece of equipment.
Is it, sorry, is it not working at all right now?
No, it's not.
So where are they keeping their vaccines?
Well, no, that's the backup generator, so if the power were to go out. If you guys would like, I can email out once I get the other bids and we can go from there. Or we can wait, I mean, I don't know that we want to wait another three weeks or...
Yeah, we have, well, kind of tight spot here. We may have to do a special meeting. I mean, that's...
Right.
I hate to do a special meeting, but that's something we may have to do just because of the sensitivity of the immunizations and everything. Once we get quotes.
As soon as he just says, even if, once he gets another quote, you can tell him whichever's lower of the two, vote for him without one. That way, here, he's given permission to move forward once he gets what they need on.
What size is that generator, Brandon?
I think the one currently in place is a 17 kilowatt. They've got it quoted out for 20 kilowatt. Their max output, or their max usage is at 50. I called Powder River and got that from them. Or their peak.
Something like that. I would just assume call a special meeting instead of just, you know, Barbara, I've seen before. I would feel more comfortable with the board. Personally, we'd do a special meeting for that. Stand with quotes. What's the board's player on that? I'm fine, by the way. Whatever works the best. Do the dollar amount, I would, I'd go better.
Okay. I'll make a couple more calls today, see if I can get Rich Electric to look to and see what they say. And maybe get you two more quotes.
At least get one for sure, if we can.
Well, Interstate will be coming back with that, but also check the local and see what they can get.
Possibly being able to repair the one? I mean, I know it's obsolete, that part.
From what Gin Pro says, they don't produce the part anymore to fix.
Okay.
I'm not a generator expert, but...
I feel fine, I'm used to mine.
All right, that's all I had?
Anything else, Brandon?
Thank you for that. I was gonna say, I was like, it's still not bad.
Yeah, I, yeah, if I can get a response, I'll get it fixed.
So you've been here, what, six months now?
Since May, mid-May.
How's it going?
Going good so far. The rain and stuff, I had it monitored. Thanks.
Since we had you in the chair, I thought I'd ask that question.
Everything else seems to be going good so far.
Are you liking it?
Yeah, keeps me busy, got different things every day, so it's kind of nice.
It looks nice out there.
I'll try to keep it that way.
Thank you, Brandon.
All right, you guys have a good day.
See ya.
But when you're not transparent about it, it feels like you have something to hide. And if you would have just put this out into the sunlight, then all of this wouldn't have been an issue at all. And that's probably one of the most frustrating things is these... And we're not trying to invoke that. We're not trying to create that situation. We're just trying to do our job to make sure that people have that, you know, clear, correct, verified information and make sure that, you know, there isn't anything that needs to be told.
I can't count how many times I've had to have that conversation through our lawsuit with the commissioners, through the issues we've had with our police department in Newcastle multiple times. I've had that conversation, like, we can stop this while it's a snowball, before it becomes a snowman.
Do you have anyone else coming, David?
Yep. There's nobody else.
We will, we will, see the fair board.
It's funny, but not funny enough.
Just a quick reminder, you know, we kind of talked. I think I have one for you too. We talked about the fair, the money and stuff like that. And I made the statement that we never paid the fair forward. And you guys asked for, I'll give you minuses on that, okay? What we had. So we put everything together on the very first sheet. If you look at this, this is kind of what the expense for the fair is this year. There's a couple of things we've had to, we added a couple hundred dollars to. Part of that was premiums, it wasn't quite for sure. So it was like $1,600, I think I put it up to $1,800. It was 16 something, so I put it up to $1,800. All the yellow that you see on here is donations. People came forward, we went out, we looked for people, just to pay off everything. If you look down at the bottom, the fair cost us $14,117, $71. After the donations came in, now the sawdust is an estimate. I mean, I have no idea what trucking costs, I just have to have it. And what I'm showing, without the donations, we spent $11,240 bucks is what we spent for fair.
Sure.
Okay? Now, I guess the big thing was, is how we do the fiscal, paying it forward to the next year. We talked about that a little bit. Commissioner humor made the statement that if we did that last year, we skipped a year, which is kind of what I kind of was saying to begin with. If the other way works, it's great, we just gotta get caught up on it. So, with that said, that's what the fair cost us. Now, if you look at the second page, this is what the special events brought you. If you look at the top thing, we went out, we found $10,450 bucks to do our fun, our sponsorships for, all call it fun stuff, or stuff like that. We have collected $7,950 bucks. We're still missing the yellow one. I know they're good for it, they said they sent the check. We just have to figure out where that check went. If someone deposited in a checking account somewhere, we don't know about it. But we will get that taken care of. If you look all the way over to the right there, the top part is what we've paid for so far with our donations, the money we had in place and stuff like that. The bottom step is the little bit we have to pay yet. We spent $9,114 of the $10,450 bucks. Okay, of the stuff for the fun events. If you look down below, from where the total promise is down, these are kind of our sponsors that helped us with. Some of this is actually part of the fair, it was food and stuff like that for our judges and stuff like that. The big majority went on to put the events on the fair. If you look down far bottom, the Courthole Tournament, you know, that was a wash. We didn't make any money, whatever we had as a sponsor and donations went out. Pool Pork event, that was new this year, we went out and found a sponsor that helped us out with the hog show. We had pork sandwiches. Fun Night and the free hot dogs with the drinks. Pretty much Billy went out and found a sponsor and he did it himself. So that, you know, we didn't make anything on that. The Tough Truck with the free hot dogs and drinks, I have no idea. That was just something the guy wanted to try and bring people in. So we didn't make anything on that. The Ranch Rodeo, we always tried to make a little bit on the Ranch Rodeo. So the Kelk Cutter they have, we get 25% of that. So we did make a little bit of money on the Ranch Rodeo. Outside that, the rest of it all went out for payouts. The Mini Stock, Mini Rough Stock Rodeo, I have no information on that at all. The Beer Garden, the two that were working on it, Linda and Mike, were trying to piece together through the bills and what went in the bank, we don't know about. Trying to get something where they're, we usually make a little bit, a couple hundred bucks or something on that. The talent contest there again, we had one sponsor and we had some donations, so everything went out just as awards. The Bouncy House Event for three days, that's where some of our sponsors up above put into it. You can see it was very expensive, it was $7,000. It was, I think it was, I don't know, $1,800 of that was just to have someone sit there and watch it. You know, force and stuff like that. That's the fair. What has been paid to date, as far as the fair goes, we pay the judges. We had the money to do that, we paid the judges. So some of the stuff down below, we'll have to still take care of that once we figure out what we want to do. That's the fair. I think in the budget, I put $1,400 into it. And honestly, I did not go down there and try to get that $11,000 sum to fit it. I did not. It just happened to fit that way. But you can see we kind of went in depth into what our costs were. We went, our paper supplies, our printing ink and all that. Because otherwise, it just comes out of our budgets. It comes somewhere. But that's roughly what the fair cost us to put on. Any questions on that?
Kind of neat to see this. Put a number to what that actually counts.
It is expensive, I mean, it really is. It's well received by the public and, you know, we get a lot of kids to stand out there for and stuff like that. We do have some pretty good sponsors. This community is good sponsoring. They give us money to help the kids bring the fun stuff in. Granted, I know it ain't helped us so much as far as the fair goes, but that's what they're doing with it.
On the Ranch Rodeo, what is 25% of the cash payout, what would that amount to?
I can't give you exactly, it was like $700 and some dollars. They take, 75% goes back to the Kelk Cutter, the teams that won it. And entry, the entry money that they spend in goes out to the first, second, third place. And Pinnacle Bank sponsored $1,500. That went to the belt buckles and some awards. And that's kind of where it's at. That's the way they've done it for years. Last year, we did not get any money as far as the Kelk Cutter goes. It was paid out in air, so, you know, we just, there's nothing we can do about that after we wrote the checks. Bottom line is, basically, if we're gonna pay forward, we skipped a bank year, we don't have the money to pay for all this, even if we use some of our fun stuff. Now, we did talk about that fun account we have for putting on special events and stuff like that. I have not, I've looked into it a little bit, but we haven't come up with an idea how we can separate that from the fairgrounds account. Right now, it's still in the same account, we haven't done anything with it. Well, once we get everything figured out, we'll get back with the guys and we'll come back with how we can take care of that. Spend dollars out this year, see if there's some other way we can keep the money out there that we can run with our event. The only thing nice about it, it allows us to pay the bills as they come in. Not have to wait a month or two for, you know, approval on it and stuff like that. It works out very well. We can count for everything we've done so far, so, you know, that's kind of a little rough. And a lot of these here, some of this here isn't quite finalized, but it's really, really close.
So, thank you for doing this, David, because it helps us kind of see where you, you know, where we're going with it, this really helps. So, this is what you owe?
That's what we, that's what fair cost us, yes.
Okay.
Not looking at the budgets, you know, how somewhere...
So, as it sits right now, if we pay this with what you have budgeted, which, what we've budgeted, we're paying, this is horribly hard for me. This, this would be paid out of this year's budget for next year's... I mean, the money we've budgeted for now, to me, seems like it should be for next year's fair. But this is this year's fair. So I'm not sure how they got a year behind.
It was last year's fair that was the problem. We got the money, the way I took from our conversations, they assumed that was for this year's fair. We've never been paid forward, we've always, come July, we never had any money. We always waited till June to start putting our fair on. So basically, it's almost, and we'd have to go back and really do some serious looking. I called, I called a bunch of them. We've always never had the money. So whatever the fiscal year fell in that fiscal year. So our money this year, if we was done it the old way, was 23, 24. It wasn't 24, 25. You know, we never took, we always stayed within our fiscal year when we paid for our fares.
Am I looking at this wrong? Somebody correct me.
So can I ask a question?
You bet.
So you have a fun account?
We have an account where we agreed to, it used to be the fair board would sponsor some of the stuff. They sponsor like, I'm gonna be awful on some, $1,500 for the junior rodeo. They sponsored some of the other stuff, they give us money for some of the fun stuff. Well, last year when we talked about it, or maybe it was the year before, we agreed that the fair board, I mean, the commissioners, was not gonna pay for it. We was gonna try and go out and come up with the money for the fun stuff. The carnival stuff, the sponsorship, the sponsorships that we have. I mean, when you look on the second page, we agreed you guys weren't gonna do it. We was gonna go out, we was gonna meet the public for it. And that's what we've done.
You, the fair board?
The fair board has done that. Well, the manager of the fairground has done most of the time, yes.
So, okay. Just so that you're aware, when the commissioners took over your accounts, all of the funds, all of that, even your fun money or whatever, was to all...
Fund money or whatever, was to all come here. So if you guys got donations, your fund money was to go to the friends of the fair.
Okay, so how do we pay our bill, I mean. Way I remember the meeting going, I went back and looked meetings, you guys are gonna take over the billing, and ours, our, our minutes were, were, were kinda vague. That account was still supposed to be ours, cause it was just money that we could do to put our stuff on.
The only account that you guys were to have was a fair account, which was, had the ten thousand dollars in it. That's the only account you guys were to keep. That was to pay premiums. And that was so that we didn't have to have the premiums come through us, and you were to pay the fair judges. That's the only thing that was to be out of that account. All the other bills were to come to us. You guys approve them and then they come here. That was. That was your line items. The only thing for fair was the premiums and all of that, and if you guys had entertainment, the donations were gonna friends of fair, and then friends of fair.
And that's where, and that's where it got mixed up, we pretty much had no money in anything. So we took our, we took our fun stuff, we stuck it in that one account, and we didn't have another checking account, so we stuck the ten thousand dollars in there, that's what we did.
You guys are not a place that are, you guys should not be accepting donations. You guys are not a tax.
We, we, I can understand, we, you know. It wasn't, well, I guess I don't, I, they, they gave us the money to put on the events. We went out and filed sponsors for the event, is what we went out and found. They gave us the money, we threw it in an account, and we went from there. I mean, that, that's where we're at, we screwed up, we're gonna have to figure out how to fix it, I mean, that's where we're at.
And that's where we tried to do that last year, when we told you guys that you couldn't. I mean, even the auditor has been telling us for years that you guys can't get donations, that has to go through friends of fair.
Once the donations are made to the fairgrounds, they came in, they come into the account.
Cause if you get a donation, you have to put it in like you're making money and it's no longer a donation.
First, Dave, thank you for doing this, I agree with Commissioner Todd, it's, it's good to see this. Um, but at the same time, a lot of work went in this, but one of the things that we, and this isn't your fault, I feel like this is, this is a group. It's not a pointing the finger thing, we, we just needed to do better, I guess. But we were gonna do Excel spreadsheet, I, I thought that's the direction we were moving in. And when those bills come into here, it's not that, what we're saying is when they come into here, we would be paying those bills. So when you say, where are we gonna get the money? We're paying those things, so when we do a budget, we're, we're, that's part of the thing, if we have monies coming in that we don't know are there. It's not to say, hey, that's ours, we're taking it, or that should be yours, it's because we're trying to establish. This from happening. We're trying to establish a, a, an ability that you can pay your bills without having a negative process. Which is, which is obviously causing you frustration, and it, it, it takes away from it, but. There was never supposed to be a fun account, it was supposed to be a account.
It was put on the entertainment.
No, and I get it, but if friends of the fair, and which is what we keep saying, friends of the fair, you know, if they, you know, have friends of the fair pay for the bouncy houses. Have friends of the fair pay those, those ones, which I would think they would be willing to do. Being that they're sponsors, um, and it, it would save you so much less stress and. And I apologize that we didn't, for me anyway, that we didn't explain it well enough, because this is kinda where we were last year. Um, back in the hole, we were trying to resolve the, the problem, and I feel like we haven't made any progress in that. Because you're still in the hole, which is frustrating, and we're still, now, budget is designed to not be in the negative when it's done. The budget is to, you know, uh, and we're in the negative every year, and that's not taking away from all the effort you guys put in. The fair is important, it's valuable, it's great for the community, but we, we get into trouble every year with this because of it, so.
And I don't think this year, when I looked at this year, if you guys give us a budget for, for ten thousand dollars, then we turn around, we spend eleven thousand. Then we either gotta come talk to you, or that was supposed to, we, we agreed we was gonna pay it out of some of the money, cause some of those donors didn't care where the money went. So we would took care of the rest, that we would still use your money, but.
Well, or you, you would submit it then, submit it so that we can take care of it.
So how come last year, did you guys give us a ten thousand dollar check?
That was for the fair.
That was, that was your account, yes, for the premiums, the judges, and to help you put the fair on.
Okay, so basically, everything's in that eleven, okay.
That's what that ten thousand dollars was for, was putting your checking account to run the fair.
That was above and beyond your budget that we, I mean, it was simply for the fair to help you with those expenses and.
So are we able to say, we go out, we, we look for, for, uh. Okay, so if we look for donations, we put them into, it becomes your guys' money. Do we still have control of what we do for entertainment at fair, unless we go through the fair?
Donations should be separate and go to the friends of the fair.
And that's what we're working on.
Friends of the fair help you pay those bills, and that way, we don't have any tax ramifications or anything for those donations. So if friends of the fair being a nonprofit organization. They could hold them, they could take those donations for you, hold them. And pay those, those things for you, where if it comes here, it's part of our.
And I understand, we, we, I, I understand that completely, it's just where do we, I mean, like I said, we've taught, we've done this for years and we, we fall right back into it. And if we know we got ten thousand dollars next year, we got something we started working on, you know, for next year.
But David, you say you understand, but let's use just what you said last time, you used over ten thousand dollars. That friends of the fair paid for a roof that the county would have paid for, and that money could have gone towards your fun stuff or whatever. There was no reason for you guys, the friends of the fair, to pay for that roof. So, if you look at that here, that money could have easily cleaned all of this up. And you'd have been completely paid for this year before the next year started. You would have had, according to this, you'd have had more, you'd have money left over.
Right.
That's, when you say understand, that's what we're trying to get you to understand, but there's a chunk of money there that would have cleaned all of this up.
Now, we didn't go looking for the person for the money, this person came forward and asked.
It doesn't matter though, it could have, right, we could have paid for the roof and that money could have gone to the fair. It doesn't matter if somebody walked up and said, I got twenty thousand dollars for you, we, it's still our responsibility to take care of the roof, we're trying, and you wouldn't be in this hole before the next fair.
But the same thing is, as we turn around, we look at a couple, three years back, we was never told that we don't take care of the buildings. We was always told it's not in your budget. But still, again, I mean, we tried to budget that stuff, but we're fine, we're fine.
It looks, I like to categorize things, it sounds like, uh, the topics that we're talking about. For one, the, the timing of fair in accordance to our fiscal, fiscal year. Uh, say for instance, if fair was the, the first of September. Um, it, it's a little bit different than, than, uh, than fair being put on instantly, once the budget's approved. And we're trying to figure out, you know, is it this year's fair, or is it next year's, it's actually next year's, but it's still this budget cycle. And for one, with the, with the donations, we don't wanna discourage any sponsorship, like, I feel like it's kinda going towards that a little bit, and we don't wanna discourage.
That's what I don't wanna do.
Yeah, we don't wanna discourage, uh, make it difficult for someone or an entity to, to sponsor something that they want to for fair. Uh, but it does have to do with funding placement. It will, things will get taken care of, the fun, the fun things are going to get taken care of, but the placement of, of those sponsorships. Need to be, if they're going to write a check, that check needs to be written to friends of fair, and then when the bill comes in. The, the bill will be paid for by either a check or whatever from the friends of fair. That would be the fun account.
And that's what we talked about last time when we met, and I have talked to them a little bit, I, we just haven't finalized.
When those monies come into, I think what Becky was trying to say is, when those sponsorship monies come in, those dollars are accounted for, and then the budget reflects it. So that does change the budget in accordance to those sponsored monies the following year, which we can't budget for, because that's not a mill levy. So that's, that gets a little frustrating on the budget side of it, we wanna, we wanna keep our budget, um, as manageable as we can. Regardless of where the sponsor monies comes from, we can use those in an appropriate place, through the friends of fair.
Okay. And, and I'm fine, you tell me what we need to do, how we're gonna do this, and I will get it done, and we'll just move forward. And don't get me wrong, we'll probably have to have another little meeting just to make sure this is where we're at. But if you tell me, right now, we have to keep that checking account and pay this here down, and you guys will cover the rest, you guys tell me that. We will not have anything move over as far as the fun stuff, the entertainment stuff, I keep thinking, forgetting about entertainment, cause it's the entertainment that we're paying for, not the fun stuff.
Play the devil's advocate for a second. There is an opportunity out there, if this is a direct, direct donation to friends of fair, for them to potentially say no. To the fair board, like on a, is there a way that those funds can be donated? And, and allocated, say they, they force the friends of fair, that, that, these funds must be used for the twenty-twenty-three. Fair at their discretion, and when those donations are made, they're made in, in that kind of a description? Because is there, there's a possibility out there that friends of fair, somebody may decide, we don't like David Klein anymore, and.
But the problem, we gotta remember it, we're not affiliated, we're not tied to the friends of fair.
Yeah, that's.
This is something they gotta agree to, I don't think, I don't think it's easy, what I asked them to do is, can we put up and get, basically the friends, and I'm here again, I'm just talking, I don't know if it can be done, I have to talk to a banker. Can we go do the same thing we have here, can they have two checking accounts? But they have someone on the fair board that signs on those, that one account, and they got someone from the friends of fair signing on their account. I don't know. Like me, I'm a, I'm a member of the friends of fair. Can they make me the signer of one of them accounts, I don't know. But that's what we're working on. I just wanna get this, this here done, like I said, I've been in this for a long time, and this has been an issue here since I started.
So that would be a question for Michael, but I. Speaking to the auditor, I don't think that you can be associated with the friends of fair. Because the friends of fair are a nonprofit, and, but they were created to help the fair. So I don't know why they would not accept the donations on behalf of the fairgrounds. That's why they're, they were created, just like the library foundation, the library foundation works for the library. So the friends of fair does stuff for the fairgrounds, I mean, that's their only purpose.
They come to us and look for things that they could do to spend their money.
Right, so if someone is specifically donating something for the fairgrounds, I would think the friends of fair would. Accept that money in on behalf of the fairgrounds specifically to help the fairgrounds.
And that's what they've done in the past, it has not, never been an issue. But when I say I'm a member of the friend, the friends of fair, I do not vote. I, I'm staying from beneath that. I go to the meeting, I listen to what they have saying, but I do not vote.
So could we set up a workshop maybe with the friends of fair and the fair board and you guys and discuss?
Well, let, let me go ahead, let me do that first, okay? I think we're all on board with what we have.
I, I see what you're saying, but I also see what Commissioner Todd's saying, if you get somebody on the friends of fair, and this is donation for the fairgrounds, and they go, well, we want a memorial. Which we just kinda had that conversation, well, we wanna add bouncy towers for the fair, and they don't agree with each other. It's still friends of the fair, it's still their entity, and they could say ultimately, so there would have to be some type of, I would think, agreement between the two. With, you know, marking it on the check, what it's for or something, but that could be, I would think, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael Dunn, in a written agreement, that says that's part of it. Cause you could get somebody that says, well, we're friends of the fair, we want this done, so that might be a problem.
Uh, that, that's where I was at, I would, I didn't wanna get the wagon in front of the horse, I was assuming that what Becky was saying is that the friends of fair were already in agreeance to that. But under the acceptance of the, the friends of fair doing that, that would have to be, uh, approved by them.
Definitely, I mean, I talked to them, I don't think they have an issue with that, we just didn't finalize it, like. Cause there again, we wanna set and talk about how we can control it, but is there two accounts, we have control of one, they have control of one? I don't, I have no idea, I don't know why they couldn't. But still, yeah, I mean, that's where we're at.
But they should not have, uh, access to your account, that's a separate entity, I mean, they, it shouldn't be connected in any way, I wouldn't think, so.
But if we have a board member that was signing on that account here for years like we do now. If we had someone, a member, but they didn't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know for.
You shouldn't have a, a friends of fair member signing on a, a fairgrounds account, just like you shouldn't have.
That's what I'm saying.
You should not have that.
That's what I'm saying right now, we have someone on that too, but let, let me work on that first, okay? As far as the friends of fair, I understand what we're wanting. Let me know what we wanna do on this, and we'll get it taken care of. Just really, really quickly, I, I just wanna take much more of that.
I guess that's where I'm gonna stick down to brass tacks on this, so. In your capital.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I did not follow. I, the last time I reported on it, Dan, they reported on it, I have no idea.
Well, last time it was like eight, eight or ten thousand.
And now it was given to them for this year's fair?
Yeah, and then there was, there was ten thousand left in their checking account, in their fair, fairgrounds checking account that they had to pay the bills for this year's fair. They had enough to pay the bills for this year's fair, twenty, twenty-three's fair.
So I guess we need to know how much you have right now to go towards this. And then maybe we'll have to, uh, make up the difference and then start fresh this year with your fresh budget for next year's fair. So you, you'll know how much money you have, it's already there, sitting there, and you can budget as such. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
We really need to know what, though?
Well, don't forget, I got the entertainment stuff, we should have paid a little bit on into, it isn't just, I mean, when we're talking about this account, we're talking about the money. Supposedly we put in for, for the entertainment, possibly we got the, the budget, we see what the budget, the fair was eleven thousand. So, you know, and then there's still something we have to pay up this. But still, I mean, that, that's where we're at, is there any way you could? Give me some money, I can pay the bills off, then I can turn around, write you guys a check and zero it out.
He needs to go figure out how much is in that account.
Without knowing where you're at, where you're, where, how much you have for funds now, I mean, I, I would feel very comfortable saying, here's a fine check, we did this. But I mean, it's kinda to that, we need to know exact amounts, where we're at. Cause we're, we're gonna have to do a budget.
So once we know what you have, what you need to throw out.
And you're planning on that money for the budget to be next year's fair? Correct?
Yes. You're gonna zero it out and what's in the budget now is ten thousand.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Um, real, a couple of the really quick questions, I'll, I'll, I'll have to sit down. Our problem is, we don't have the manpower. I'll do the best I can, I'll try and get you some.
Just looking for checking account balance.
Well, the checking account balance, I also gotta go through checks we've already written, that are not cleared and stuff like that, we're fine. Okay. Fairboard meetings, we cannot have a quorum. We still need to do our business, is there by any chance, there's a ball in here, you guys can appoint someone from this commission, the committee here, uh, commissioners, to set in to be our third member? So our prob, I mean, we can't approve anything, we can just sit and talk about stuff, and that's, if that's what you want us to do, that's what we'll do. But I don't know how far you guys are, where you guys are at as far as appointing new to our fairboard members.
That would be a question for David.
I think the fair board's a separate entity, it's underneath you guys, though, I think until you have a third person, separate, apart from you guys, it has to be run through. The entire commission here, and I don't think one of you guys, so I, I don't think you're gonna have that intermingling.
So what do we do about the, uh, am I able to go in there and put a ad in the paper for a part-time employee or a full-time? We have one person, and they pretty much, their business got busy enough, they didn't want a full-time position, so they wanna be a, uh, I guess you'd call it a contract.
Contract employee.
To do a little stuff, you know?
Is this for maintenance, you're just talking?
Well, we're just talking, we're basically, we're talking maintenance, we need someone to, usually from about the end of fair to the end of year, we don't have that much in the office. So, we gotta do our winterizing, we gotta do this, and believe me, Billy and I are worked it out there.
So you need approval to run an ad?
Ad, yeah, I, can we still do that, we've already done it once, we didn't get anybody really put in for it. So we need to advertise for, for, for the.
You can do it right here.
Yeah, that's how I would, since you don't have a quorum, I would think that has to come now, we will make that. Motion and move forward with it. Get authorized, you can do it. Is that right, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
I make a motion to advertise a part-time maintenance employee for the fairgrounds.
Are we looking for a full-time or a part-time? I put a part-time and/or a full-time.
And/or a full-time.
If we find a full-time, we oughta grab on and see where we can go.
Clarification, are you asking us to do it or authorizing David to do it?
We're authorizing David to do it.
I think.
True, Becky. This is gonna get confusing.
I, I apologize for not mentioning sooner in the conversation, but Lindsay at Salt Creek Vet was interested in the position. The veterinarian. Um, and wanted someone to give, I told her I would let the board know to have someone give her a call, cause she wanted to know the details and I'm not.
As board member?
Yeah, no, as, or board member or a maintenance person, she was interested, so.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, the motion, I'll be seconded to allow David to advertise for a. Part-time or full-time employee at the fairgrounds. Maintenance employee. Is there any other discussion? Very none, although the favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
One other thing. You know we don't have anybody in the office. You know, and we can't make, you know, anything like that, until we get someone in there. Is there any way? When we look at our budget, that we can take these here, take these invoices and look at them and see, make sure they look legit. Can we pass it to you to have you do?
Just bring your bills to us, we know what needs to be paid.
That we can do these, yeah, I'm just saying on the maintenance, on the, on the, on the utility ones, cause down here, some of this might go.
Just leave that and I'll, we'll just go through your bills.
But the, the, the wages and this down here, we'd have to, you know, if we gotta shut at different places, we could do that, get that treated at the end of the year. And then these here, up here, when we get these, we'll just, we'll just review them and we'll pass them on to you guys. If they look legit, we'll pass them on to you guys.
If they're like, just say like the water bill, if that's really high and you gotta leak, you guys, we don't know what you're gonna be using for usage. You guys, if they look good, bring them to us, we'll get them.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, if we can do that, that would save us some time until we get somebody. Till we get someone in the office or whatever.
If they seem legitimate, go bring it up here and we want to get it paid.
That is, just to clarify, that's what we did discuss at our last meeting also, David. Uh, we preferred to have your eyes on them before they came here rather than having our address being for your bills. Um, we did decide on you guys looking them over and then understanding, you guys know what's going on out there way more than what we even do, so. Uh, with that, with your guys' understanding of what those bills are, bring them to Becky and then we'll voucher those.
And we talked about the water bill, so we have a lot of metering, we shut off in there. And we just need to see if it's more feasible for us to shut them off. Turn them back on, we'll have to look into that, as we did the last time, but they're going up that high, it might be feasible for us to shut, shut them off, cause we got like nine years.
And let the reconnect fees and stuff for all.
I think we're. I know I'm forgetting something, but, oh. I'm not, you know, we'll have to talk about it, I still like the idea of a commissioner showing up every now and then to a meeting. I fully believe that's beneficial. That way, it's just like me sitting here talking to you, it's, I, I say it up here, it's like five against one. Let's reverse the role, you know, they got, other people's got questions, they don't have time to come up here and stuff like that. I think it's a good idea, I really do. Just not getting, our meetings ain't that long, we're still gonna continue to have a meeting, but we can't make any decisions, correct? Okay. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for David?
Write your questions down as you think of them, though.
Yeah. Hey, I think we're on time here.
Yep, oh, two minutes over now.
Two minutes over.
We got started earlier.
Mine says eleven thirty, you're good.
Thanks, David, be sure and thank Billy too.
Yes.
Erin, you're up next.
Okay. You get rid of the smoke, that would be a test. Are you ready for me?
Yep.
Okay.
We have the floor.
Erin Kershey, the Weston County 4H educator, so. Just wanted to give you guys a quick update, summer was fast and furious. Um, we started with State Shoot, um, July sixth through the ninth, I believe. Um, seven youth from Weston County went and participated and we did very well, as you can see, there's, um. Lots of firsts and seconds, um, listed there, Samuel Ferguson, um, qualified to go to the Rotone. New Mexico trip, so they get to go down to the NRA Whittington Center. Into September, I believe, I have, forgot to look at that date this morning. But they only take twelve youth from the state each year, so they qualify. Ten based on their shooting at State Shoot and then two based on their record books. Um, so it's a really cool trip, um, Trevin White went last year and really enjoyed it. Um, hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, we'll start finding out if any of our kids, they should. Um, Samuel should and Trevin and Tevin White. Should hopefully qualify, um, to go to Grand Island to the National 4H Shoot next June, so. That's kind of a long process for them to get those teams picked, but our Shooting Sports kids did excellent. Um, it's the first time I'd ever been to State Shoot, so. If you guys ever get a chance, it's the biggest, um, 4H event that Wyoming puts on. There's about nine hundred kids that go and shoot over the three days. It's amazing, it was so much fun to go and watch our kids do really well and just see that aspect of, um, 4H, cause I had not ever been. So after that, we just kind of prepared for County Fair. Um, so we had a hundred and nineteen 4H youth participate in County Fair. And nine hundred and sixty-four exhibits across, um, everything from. Our indoor static exhibits to all of the livestock exhibits, so. Um, County Fair from the 4H side of things was really great, I thought our kids showed up and did very well and I was super excited. To get to celebrate all of their successes with them at County Fair.
Doctor, I have one question.
Yep.
We had a hundred and nineteen youth this year, how many of you had left?
I did not, um, I need to pull those out and I, I wanna start tracking some of those statistics and. I actually have access to a couple of past fairs, so it would be interesting to go back in and look at some of those numbers. Um, and I was really surprised that there were a hundred and nineteen of a hundred and seventy enrolled, so. I felt that was a pretty, pretty good number, especially where our Shooting Sports kids aren't, um. So they do their county shoot, so they really don't do anything at County Fair, so. I'm gonna guess the vast majority of those fifty other kids were probably Shooting Sports kids that did not have an exhibit at County Fair. Um, so.
Be an interesting number to see where, yeah, how many of, whether it's with the Shooting Sport or with the 4H at the fair.
Yep.
How many of them participated?
Yep. Um, that was this morning, it was like, oh, I'm just gonna quick pull some numbers out and just see where we were at, so I thought that was really interesting. Um. And then getting ready for State Fair, we actually had seventeen youth attend State Fair. They, um, participated, were showed in dog livestock judging contests, um, market goats, market swine. Poultry, market sheep, rabbits, beef and fashion review. And then we had an additional forty-eight youth, um, send a hundred and thirty static exhibits. Um, and everybody did very well, Weston County was very well represented, we brought home, um, quite a few large, um. Rosettes, um, in the static, our kids, um, did very well across all of their, um, events. Laura Lipp was the champion junior ready-to-wear model at State Fair. Um, and there were several others, so. Weston County was very well represented, our kids were awesome, it was a really fun week, other than it was. Hundred plus degrees every day at State Fair. So, um, upcoming events, record books are due next Friday, the fifteenth. And then we'll follow that up with record book judging. Um, Cloverbuds are getting ready to kick off now that we're back in school, so the Upton and Newcastle group will be. Ready to rock and roll, I think the third week of September. The new 4H year actually begins October first, so we're, I'm kinda starting to get geared up for that and. Get organized to do some fun things during National 4H Week, which is October first through the seventh. And so hopefully we'll have some fun activities that we'll do and. Try to get everybody really geared up and ready for this next year to kick off. And then, um, that first, I think I leave the ninth of October, I'm headed to the. National Association of Extension 4H Youth Development Professionals Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So with my, um, hiring package with UW, they pay for my first national conference, so I'm headed to Pittsburgh. Um, so I'm excited for that to hopefully pick up some really cool ideas and network a bunch with some other 4H educators from around the. Country and then we'll come back and it'll be 4H Acheema Day on October twenty-ninth, so. I keep thinking, oh, we got through fair, it's maybe gonna slow down, and I think I'm just kidding myself, so. And then on the back are just some pictures from County Fair, State Fair, State Shoot. Um, just some that I pulled off my phone this morning of all the various kiddos doing lots of great things, so. Weston County had a pretty great summer, I think, so I'm excited for. Finish it out with record books and be ready for the new 4H year, so, any questions?
Does anybody have questions to answer?
Okay, and our new admin started, Chrissy Butler started with us on. Tuesday, the twenty-second, I think was that Tuesday, um, and then Abby was in and did about a week's worth of training, so I think. Abby's done doing some training and I think we're off to a good start, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Good work.
Thanks.
Thanks for the update.
Yes.
Keep up the hard work, Erin.
Thank you. All right, have a great rest of your day, guys.
Next up is old business, the first item is Office three sixty-five. I'd like to know that's what you were here for.
Charles, Charles is going to speak for me, Tina Cody, Quik, a district court. Still having ongoing issues with emails, now it looks like I've read the emails. But I haven't, they are there and unbeknownst to me, so I have to go scramble back through. My emails to see what I've actually looked at and not. So I think we're getting closer to me being defunct.
Maybe somebody's trying to tell you something?
Yep, you know? If this is it, then this is it. It's just important, there was one email that was sent in, I thought it was sent in June. Um, almost missed, the, the county attorney's office almost missed that hearing. Because it didn't go through.
And I guess as far as the, not seeing that the messages appearing red. Recent development, haven't really had a chance to look into it, there isn't a whole lot of looking into it that I can do. On the existing system, since we don't really manage that. And, you know, just one of those things where the way that we're looking at it with a lot of. Benefits that come along with Office three sixty-five subscription, one of the big things that kinda, we had another customer kinda get hit in the head with a bat. Um, we've been telling them to enable multi-factor authentication. On, on their Office three sixty-five accounts for probably the last six, if not more, months. And they are a financial institution, they were compromised, their email account was compromised because they didn't have multi-factor authentication. And it's turning into a pretty big deal because being a financial institution, there's a lot of personally identifiable information involved there. And so lawyers are involved, insurance companies are involved. Yeah, not, not to try to give a scare tactic or anything like that, but you know, that's kinda a lot of where we're. Sitting anymore with trying to help organizations such as Weston County keep their information secure and avoid those situations where lawyers and. Insurance companies have to get involved is, um, they're, you know, they're even involving, uh, cybersecurity. Analysts on the backend, try to see who, where, what, and we know the how, MFA was never enabled on the account. Cause just a password by itself is not secure enough. And so, yeah, if there's any other questions or any other hangups that we kinda wanna see if we can't filter through.
The, uh, the MFA, that, is that the explanatory side of what is, why we're dropping or not receiving emails with our current?
System? So as far, not necessarily, that's just kinda the one facet of that is to make those accounts secure. Um, the biggest thing that I've seen so far with not reading the emails is IMAP, and that's again, kinda going back to a security aspect and kind of a functionality aspect. Is a lot of the emails are dependent on, IMAP has been around since emails been in existence. And one of our standards right now with Office three sixty-five is just turning it off because it's insecure. It's not as reliable as it used to be, cause that's gonna be the biggest thing with even some of the newer. Office products such as Outlook, is it's kinda, it's deprecating a lot of those older standards and it's, they're not supported like they used to be. And so it'll be interesting to see, uh, today, we kinda had to backstep, uh, the Office software on Tina's new computer. That I was setting up today, and we'll see if IMAP is working any better for her moving forward, but. You know, it's, again, it's IMAP, a lot of that stuff is getting deprecated anymore.
Is Office three sixty-five gonna solve the problems?
Yes.
If it is, how, what is it doing that we're not, and should it, is it gonna solve the problems of her, just her, or should everyone, I mean. Give me an understanding of why we need this.
If everybody is on Office three sixty-five, that moves all of the emails in and out through the Office three sixty-five ecosystem. And then the way it changes how Outlook communicates, it's using a little bit more proprietary Microsoft communication standards between each individual client and Office three sixty-five.
So if we have only partial, uh, people on that system and the partial people on the old system, how's that?
We're, we're just gonna see the same things that we're seeing today, we're gonna see the same deliverability issues, you know, one of the big examples right now is anybody. Emailing between westinggov.com and city of Upton. Uh, there's still that deliverability issues and that will not go away until we, you know, collectively make a decision, one or the other. I would much rather see us move forward to Office three sixty-five and step back because there is that much more benefit from that type of subscription.
I understand with Charles, the, the upgrade to Office three sixty-five, we're, we're gonna have an upfront fee. And then the, there was going to be like a maintenance or a service fee monthly?
Per user per month?
Per user per month, what, what does that cover because of our, like, we own our computers and that's our property?
Yep.
So what's the, what would the service fee take care of?
So the per user per month is not only that mailbox that everybody would use, but it's also all of the Office, Microsoft Office software. So everybody's living on the same version of Office, it's regularly being updated, it moves it all to a software as a service type model. So you get that exchange mailbox, you get all of the Office products, all of them will stay up to date and that's, you know, something that we will continue to manage on the backend. Where those products stay up to date, every, every new, or if there's any new vulnerabilities, those, we'll make sure that those continue to get patched. And there's different tiers, uh, to those subscriptions as well. Um, and so that's the Office part, uh, the other part that we're putting on there is we're layering in on top of that our spam filter as, as well. So then you guys can make different rules and, you know, you know, just catch that much more junk that's coming in now, because I, to be honest with you, I don't know if there's anything in front of the email today. There is the Office three sixty-five spam filtering, uh, for those users that are currently on there. But in front of the, uh, WesternGov, JUBJUB email servers, I don't know what's in front of it right now, I believe there is something, don't know what it is, though.
Currently, are we paying for Office three sixty-five programs separately?
Some departments already are paying for it.
Do, do, so not all the departments have it or?
Not at current, no. So right now, the, basically it's the departments in this building that there's, I, Gilbert has it downstairs, but other, aside from that, nobody else has a subscription to Office three sixty-five today.
So what are they using?
As far as?
As Word and Excel and whatnot?
So the big thing is, so because Microsoft has shifted a lot of stuff to software as a service. When the sheriff's office needed the product, when they were moving away from the city, that was the solution that we went with, so they could get those updated versions of those Office products installed on their computers. So as far as, uh, Tina or anybody else in this building, it's kind of a mismatch of what we have licensing for. Tina right now is using Office twenty thirteen, however. However, the Department of Revenue does the assessor's office a little bit differently and they have that product set up that way. So, and that's where kind of maybe some of those different tiers would come into is maybe the assessor's office, maybe we'll do an exchange only license. That's going to get them where they need to be, get the county where it needs to be to have everybody move over to Office 365. But, you know, I don't know how long that will last with the Department of Revenue, just as that particular example is concerned. How long that'll last if, maybe the, the DOR might shift that chaos back to the county at some point too. But that's just for the Office products, nothing, no exchange mailbox fees or anything like that.
By 2025, 26, the whole state of Wyoming court system will be e-filing. I don't know how all of this will play into that e-filing. We got to have something that talks to the state and county. And if we can't get this figured out, I'm not sure how smooth that would be.
Another feature with Office 365 is Microsoft Teams. That would actually open up a lot of chat communication between interdepartment. And in some cases, I even have other customers that will reach out to me on Teams too because you can reach out outside of the organization if you choose. That can be locked down if wanted, if needed be, but you know, we can, you can do that cross, cross organization communication too without just leaving them out.
So Charles, you've been taking care of the computers here for several years.
Mm-hmm.
In your opinion, because you're the professional here, do you recommend we update everyone to the same thing?
Yes. Yeah, everybody on the same Office platform across the board. Because like I said, it's one of those things that out of all of our controls when Microsoft moves that software as a service model because it is almost like voluntary with Microsoft to do those one-time purchases of the Office products anymore. Just to get them in there because they're pushing everybody to that software as a service model. And, you know, doing, doing rough math, you can, you know, if you were, and that's kind of what it boils down to anymore. If you purchase just those Office products outright, they have a lifespan of three to five years, we'll say. You math that out with the Office subscription, it roughly comes out to about the same, but you're missing a whole feature set that comes included with that Office 365 subscription.
What would, is there a competitor to Office 365? Like what would, what would be the competition to the same?
You know, I guess there's going to be, there's always going to be those third-party email providers that are out there, such as JUBJUB, which is everybody's using today. You know, I haven't really played a whole lot in that space, to be honest with you, just because a lot of our efforts are focused in on making that Office 365, or Office 365 offering the best and the secureest that we can offer everybody at that point. Even JUBJUB, it's been a little while, but reaching out to them and saying, hey, we're considering, because I'll still have to work with JUBJUB on the backend on how that email deliverability works. They're even like, yeah, nope, let's push it to Office 365. So it's just, you know, and I don't know what it's like on their end, you know, as far as hosting that email solution on, on their side. But you know, it kind of tells you a little bit when that's something that they don't, that they're kind of ready to not have either. Because that's kind of been our big push is, we had certain posted offerings, but we've even moved away from those and just kind of, you know, let, let those other companies kind of handle and manage that.
Charles, is there a, you talked about a user fee, is that a monthly or a yearly?
It is, so it's a per user per month subscription. Now that can be paid annually if that is something that the county desires. The, the drawback to that is if you purchase X number of licenses, you will have those number of licenses for that year. You can only back down once a year. You can move up, you can upgrade, you can add at any time throughout the year and they'll actually prorate that. You know, obviously if you're, you know, six months in, you need to add a user, you're only going to pay for that last six months, the next six months for that user.
So by user, do you mean by Office or by each individual in that Office?
So it'll be, so you as an individual would have a license.
Yep.
Yep, and so and that's kind of the, the other side of that too, where, you know, the person is being licensed. And because even installing the Office products, you could install Office and license Office on five different machines using your information. And then the computer doesn't account, as long as it's you that is the one that's using it.
Any idea what that is, the amount?
Not off the top of my head, because like I said, it's the, you know, it's the cost to Office 365 plus the spam filter, which is another per user count there.
We have roughly 60 employees that come out, 67200 a year for the, for the monthly charge, for the annual. Say we go to 365.
Yep.
I mean, 48, we was quoting $4,800.
Yep.
For everybody. Does that give you like a one-year subscription to it?
No, so.
Then you sell, I'm saying, we could go in $4,800 every year and buy a new program every year cheaper.
So the one-time upfront cost is the, it would be the labor cost for us to come in and work with the existing system to bring all of the emails in and then upgrade each of the individual machines. Because there's a lot, there's some setup there that kind of goes on the backend, making sure that on that initial step, everybody is on Office 365. We bring all of your old emails from the old system and then make it as seamless as possible for anybody that's using JUBJUB today. Throw that switch, everybody's on Office 365, everything that was there is now in a new system. So it's just the one-time setup cost for that and then just the reoccurring, basically what goes to Microsoft to maintain those processes.
So $4,800, that wasn't the subscription, that was the cost to bring us up across?
Yes, yep, it's that initial setup cost.
I was kind of under the impression that that was our first.
No.
To buy the 365 program.
So yeah, there's, there's a, and then I, it's been a minute since I've looked at the quotes and information on that. But yeah, there's an initial setup cost and then the per user cost to Microsoft and then to, to our spam filtering solution.
So in reality, that $10 per user is your 365 subscription.
Yeah.
So because I'm the one in charge of the budgeting and the fully type, what happens if we do all this and it doesn't work?
I.
Worst-case scenario?
That would be like a nightmare that I would have. Like I do not see a way that that would happen. The only way that that would happen is if JUBJUB decided to no longer work with me.
No, but if they were, there's no way that we do all of this and we pay all of this and it's still not?
So the only, just by the nature of the way it works, because the email deliverability happens on the internet level. It's what's called an MX record. So an MX record says, if I'm sending an email to westinggov.com, it's going to look up this MX record. And that MX record contains where that email server lives. We change that out to Office, well, technically we would change it off to our spam filtering solution and then that pushes it up to Office 365 after that. For some reason, some, someplace on the internet would have to fail in its normal email deliverability for that to work.
So we have employees that still have RT email addresses?
Yep.
And that, it'll allow them to?
Everybody would be able to move over to westinggov.com because at that point, because it would be, that once that MX record is changed out, that mail does not touch the JUBJUB server anymore. So it doesn't create that loop that we have today. And then from JUBJUB's end, they would just make sure that on their server, westinggov no longer domains. And then as long as that's completely cleaned up, there would no longer be any deliverability issues.
And they can still keep their RT connect?
So and I guess, you know, as far as the county was concerned, that would be the big thing is to make sure that everybody is using the westinggov.com domain for kind of that, you know, that outward appearance, if you will, of the organization. Like, you know, because otherwise, because, because before the sheriffs, for example, if they were using an RT connect, they were using wcsheriff@rtconnect.net. If anybody, if anybody got that from anywhere outside of the community, it'd be like, what is this? Whereas at least at westinggov.com was a custom domain that's specific to the county, it relates to the website. It's all that connected, so that kind of makes that check on the internet for, hey, this email is legitimate. It's coming from somebody at the county.
So we would make those that have the RT connect, get rid of those email addresses?
They wouldn't have to get rid of them. And so and that's, would be the thing too, is, you know, part of that initial setup is we could take those emails, bring them in. I did it for several of the sheriffs already, take those emails, bring them over, so then they would have them. And then it would be that one-stop shop. You're behind westinggov, you have all of your previous information, everything is ready to go for you. And then, like I said, when, you know, because if I'm waiting for an email from a sheriff or a Gilbert, we'll say, for example, and that email comes from westinggov.com, you know, that's my first validation, does this email going to be legitimate?
And Kelly would start receiving emails from the town of Upton, like, we would still be able to communicate with her?
Yep, yeah, and so that'd be the benefit there is if, you know, at some point the city of Upton moved to an Office 365 model, they would be subscribed to that Teams, just send that chat message out to them.
But, but she'd be able to receive from us even though she's not on?
Yes, yeah, because again, that MX record's pointing through, through the spam filter drop to 365 and not trying to deliver it backend through, through JUBJUB anymore.
Clarify.
Well, I guess I don't even know if there, if MX record's even an acronym, to be honest with you. It's just that MX record, this is what it uses to find where that email server is, you know, just kind of one of those things. I haven't even actually really looked in to the history behind MX record and where exactly it comes from. It's just, that's what that does.
I'm not too excited.
No, I just need to work.
I will say ironically, or not ironically, after the last time we discussed this, a couple of days later, I got some emails in that were two weeks old on, on my county computer. It just popped in.
And that's just kind of where IMAP is with a lot of that. Because, you know, as far, as part of our defaults, our defaults is we'll go in and we turn on, or we turn off IMAP and POP. Those are the two oldest email communication standards running around anymore. We turn those off just because of their vulnerabilities. Microsoft, when you create a new tenant, they turn on what's called security defaults on their side. And that's the one thing that they turn on is multi-factor for sure for every, you know, and we can ease into that or we can turn it on right away. At our cost, we've actually been turning on another license that will actually allow us to do what's called conditional access. And that'll basically lock down, for, you know, a more secure standpoint, lock down any kind of logins to the United States. I mean, there's no reason why anybody should be logging in from Mexico or anything like that. You know, just, just as that extra step to make sure that we're helping things get locked down.
Can you guys do anything better than $10 per user? That's the thing is the, the reoccurring cost, this 7200 a year for the county.
Yep.
And that's, I think that's the biggest hangup that I know I'm having, you know, is that much money every year going out?
Yep, yeah, and, you know, I forget, you know, a lot of it kind of boils down to is stomaching that initial capital versus general. I don't know how some of that works for Weston County, but it's like, oh, yeah, this is going to be just a little bit of a change on however. That needs to come out and, I mean, we price it in such a fashion that, I mean, there's little to nothing on, that we make on any of those licenses subscriptions. I mean, that's what it's going to cost across the board for just about anybody that's going onto it. We can always do more because there's always higher tiers of those licenses that we can get. But this is, you know, the base minimum that we can get at to make sure that we're moving the county in a positive direction.
My fear is it's happening to me. If it starts happening to my deputies, then we don't work because our work is basically through email.
And I think we need to look at the security part of it. If, if we don't do this and our, our system is so old that can be breached, how much it's got, that going to cost us if our system is breached?
Yeah, and then again, I don't want to come in here with a giant scare tactic on everybody either, but, you know, just, you know, I look at that organization that got breached, I think it was about three weeks ago when that email account was broke. You know, they were technically already paying for it, they just wouldn't let us hit the little checkbox. But now they're already, they're paying that plus all of the cybersecurity and analyst fees, all the lawyer fees and insurance fees and deductibles and everything else there. And so, you know, exactly to your point, your cost today versus your cost tomorrow, next year, three, five years down the line.
I think sometimes in an effort, like Safeline, we often don't look at the big picture. And not modernizing, we end up not realizing the cost of say, a defendant not getting notice that they should be getting and then the court's drawn out an extra week or two or maybe even for some little catch-all, they get away with doing something that they should have probably had to pay for it. And we look at it in a short-term view and this doesn't seem to be one of those problems that we should just keep kicking down the road to do it in the cheapest fashion if it's the direction that we need to go. There's a price for it. It's not fun, it's not pretty, but it needs to be done to modernize what we can do efficiently because there's some costs and the delays as well. And I don't think those are ever factored, factored into things sometimes. So I think if it's something that we need to do, the cost is absolutely nail-biting, but it, it has to be done.
Yeah, and I don't know if this helps the county at all too. I know, I, I don't think it's all that significant, but there is a cost that would be drawn back from JUBJUB to as far as that monthly fee is concerned. I don't know what that is, but I do believe that you charge by the mailbox.
I figure it's minimal what we pay them.
It's not a lot, but, but then, you know, you compare to what that cost is versus, you know, the added benefit and all of the extra product and offerings that you do get for just, you know, per user, per, you know, per user bore on a lot of that too. And I don't know if it, again, if it helps the county, if it would help realize maybe on a per, per department, you know, kind of figuring out what that cost would be per department too. And, you know, and that might be something to consider, kind of splitting out that one-time cost because, you know, that's what we're doing is per user, going to each department and doing that migration across from the company.
I don't usually like to bring personal things in here, but I, in my business, I did have a breach through email a few years ago and I lost 80% of my files on my computer. It didn't hurt me financially, it was just a really big pain and it took us, because I lost all my history of my business at the time. So we need to think about that too, that a breach of email, we could lose files, we could lose historical things that we need to be responsible to have, like our email trails and our, all of that, that, you know, by, by statute, we're supposed to keep. So we need to think about that.
And there's a lot of, a lot of archiving involved there. I, if you asked me to go find a previous clerk's email account, you know, a year after they left, I don't know that I, either I or JUBJUB would have been able to retrieve that information. I know in Office 365, I can, I can go pull a lot of stuff if you'd be out of that.
There's one in the county that got hacked. I know there's, I mean, they basically got ransomwared.
Well, so and that's, you know, and that's the stance where we're at today is we put a lot of those mitigations and so between, because it sounds like you had a ransomware attack where a lot of the files were encrypted and were lost in that fashion. We do have a lot of steps today that will, to try to mitigate ransomware within the county's networks. But, you know, if there's that much more, so more of what I'm concerned is if that malicious attacker will say, wants to get into your guys' email and impersonate you guys. I've seen it all, way too many emails where somebody comes in and says, hey, I need you to send my, there's another county that I've worked with, they ended up letting the email pass through, but they had a commissioner that supposedly wanted their checks sent to a different checking account. And that went on. to a different checking account, and that went on for a year before that particular commissioner realized that, hey, I'm not getting, I'm not getting my commission check. And the email should have, you know, that's kind of where, you know, it's kind of that spam filtering, phishing stuff is going to come into play to help prevent some of that, and, you know, because the county ended up being liable for that, that, those wages for that year, and paid it twice.
You know, and the hackers are getting very ingenious on how they're getting into the systems, I mean, I look, I, I think back to when Target got hacked with all the credit cards, it got in through the HVAC system.
Yep.
You know?
No, and so, and that's, you know, the biggest thing with NFA is, you know, making sure that, you know, somebody doesn't have your account, and it is legitimately from your account, looks like it's from you, it is you, they have your password, but it wasn't actually you asking for that, you know, that direct deposit change or something like that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to go forward and start the process to switch everyone over to Office 365.
I have a motion, property second to start the process of switching everyone over to Office 365. Discussion. Where are we getting the money from?
Financial, yes. But it has to be a monthly.
Yeah, I was, where I was thinking of this is, at our next meeting, we're going to look at our arc of money we have. I mean, I know this is pretty, it's high on the priority list, is maybe deciding at our next meeting where, what we're going to do with this money, where we can spend it, how we're going to spend it, that would maybe a way to get this up and running.
Would it make things go faster if we did, if we gave you the money to do the initial, but you need it all at once?
Usually what, usually we, usually we do it by, you know, once the project is complete, so, so, you know, if we want to do it all upfront, or however you want to do it. Well, and, and that's the other thing, and however it makes it easier for the county, if you want us to do something monthly, you want us to do something annually, on some of our services, we've gone as far as, you know, pay ahead three years on, on one of our backup solutions for another customer.
So could we, could we go ahead and approve it and then decide that our next meeting?
Yeah, see, I was, where I was going with on the financial side of this is, we're going to have to make adjustments to every bit, every, but, every department.
I would rather address not to each department until the next budget.
Okay, just do it instead of, do it as like it.
It'll be so hard to, maybe in each department in a budget adjustment, do the budget adjustment for us to just pay it monthly out of our account in the clerk's office or the courthouse account, we'll do the budget adj, or they can budget for it next year out of their accounts because for us to figure out how many computers and how many users in each department for a whole year.
And it would just be the users that you have to be.
Yeah, or just, because I think SPAR figured it out, 60 people, and we'll actually try and figure out the exact amount for the whole.
And it's kind of interesting, because like I said, there are already certain departments that are already paying it out of theirs.
They're already paying out of their budget, and they've already budgeted for it. So it's not going to be the full 600, some of them are already on.
Yeah, well, that, I, I kind of wanted to plan going into this, how, how we were going to move forward with it, you know, financially wise, but that makes more sense than this year, just do it through one account, lump it all into one account, then next year's budget will break it out per department.
They'll have to budget for it.
Okay.
So you need, you want a line item just specifically for that, or you want to do it out of a, a kind of like?
We'll all get a better, all get with SPAR, and we'll try to pinpoint exactly how many, because some of them are already done. It's not going to be a full 4,800, I don't think. It won't be a $600 per month, because some of them are already paid for it. I'll try to get an exact amount for you guys for the next meeting, for us to do the budget adjustment, on what account, we'll have the arc of discussion.
So we still okay to move forward?
Yeah, yeah.
There is a motion, property second on the floor, to move forward with Office 365.
Depending on how fast everybody's going to stomach it, I would, we can go as short technically as a week to get everybody moved over, and we could stretch it out if we wanted a little bit more time, move upwards of three weeks to do a full migration and get everybody switched over.
We have to do that on laptops and, you know, like our laptops, and we have to do adjustments on any of that stuff.
So the biggest, the biggest thing on the individual machines is concerned is, once we have the licenses to do the actual Word, Excel, Outlook upgrades, and we can do that, however, you know, the biggest thing is, like I said, I put Office, ended up having to put Office 2013 on Tina's computer, that'll be completely deprecated by the end of October. So a lot of what, I just did wrapping up 300 mailboxes for another city-county organization. The preference was, is to have all Office upgraded on everybody's machines prior to doing the upgrade, for you guys, it might be a little bit more interesting just because of kind of those IMAP connection issues that we've been seeing. But I would definitely like to see all the products upgraded first, you know, on any county-owned machine or anybody else's machine first. Biggest thing is, once we have the licenses, I can give them assigned, once they're assigned, then we can get it installed on everybody's computers.
Without having the information, the exact numbers at our next meeting, what exactly are we going to be moving forward with until then?
Everything.
Yeah.
Everything? We just, we can still move forward without those numbers, we can just clarify the numbers at our next meeting?
Okay.
So could you take care of Tina first?
I can, yeah, well, and, and that would be the other side, it'd be, like I said, however, however the departments want to go about it, if they, you know, if we want to give everybody more time, if we want to focus on certain departments first, because, because I could go in there, I could have everybody switched by the end of the week, everybody's going to start, you know, tiering emails through Office 365, they just may not have all of their old stuff moved over right away. So it's just, you know, depending on how we want to move forward when, once we get started.
What would you recommend?
It, it really depends on, you know, what's, what's more important right now, are we looking for the deliverability, if you get solved right away, because then, yeah, we'll move everybody over, if you don't need your old emails for maybe a day or two, we can move those later, it all depends on what, what we're looking for to make sure we have all the emails, you know, all the old ones. If we can go without those for a day or two, we can do deliverability today, if we want to give it a minute, because, because that, and, you know, and this is the way that I ended up doing that other city-county entity, is move all their emails over, it would keep syncing all of the new emails that were coming in on the old system, until we threw the switch and had all the deliverability, it's just making that connection with, making that switch over on each individual client computers.
Got any discussions?
I think so, rip off the Ben Davis.
Well, and like I said, if there's anything that we can do as far as kind of the logistics of, you know, monthly, annual subscription, subscription, just let us know, and we, we do it a couple of different ways, whatever, whatever suits the needs of the county.
Yeah, that's what we'll have to figure out next meeting, is how we want to do the, the financial side of it.
Because we, in this other, like I said, it was a city, city-county organization that we were doing, and we were splitting the bills for them, so they know which one's going to the city, which one's going to the county, kind of type of deal too, so if there's anything like that or anything, just let us know, and we should be able to accommodate all of that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those saying aye?
I would do what I can.
Did you get your new tower?
Yes, it's not even a tower, it's, it's really tall.
She kept saying.
Yeah, a tower, no.
This is how, how, we have this little box, and she's like, I don't have a little box, I'm like, yes.
Yeah, it's so cute, and efficient.
It's kind of funny too, because when I, we were planning on coming over, because I, you know, because I, when we submitted for, you know, our other business that we're working over here for the camera systems, like, is Becky not want us to walk me over there on Tuesday for some, oh, she probably just doesn't want me tearing the courthouse apart while everybody's in a speech meeting.
I told him that we have a meeting, and I said Wednesday, and, yeah.
Yeah, that's what Tina thinks.
So, yeah, it worked out to come be able to talk to you guys, I really appreciate your time.
Because I would never have been able to tell you any of that, I don't even know that.
Just say whatever Charles.
I just know proactive versus reactive would be better.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Mook Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Okay, do we want to take a lunch break, or do we want to tackle the rest of the agenda?
Let's finish.
And it's not that much, three things.
Can we have a five minute?
It's still on my.
No, I have to go.
Can we take a five minute bathroom break?
Yeah, let's take a quick five minute bathroom break, and then we'll tackle. Come back into session, next up is Title 25.
Um, I just, you know, we've been running it in the paper, has anyone come to the clerk's office?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm not sure how long we should run it, we're just spending money at this point, if anybody's been interested, I would think they would have picked up on it, if, if we ever do run it again, I guess I would suggest we need to have more information on it, because there's a lot of insurance and certifications and stuff that have to go with it, for probably the hospital to even allow you to be involved in it, correct, am I correct on that?
That is correct.
I would, I would suggest, say if no one has put it, if we just put it on our, our website, where people can see it, and, and maybe have something posted in the lobby or something about it.
Yeah, I think, I think we've advertised enough, you know, if there's anybody interested, they can take care of, and we've done, I'd say we've done our part by advertising for it now, so.
And I like to point out the hospital made it clear they've been advertising for it as well, and they have done nothing, so.
And for our viewers, you're talking specifically of the transfers, right, the Title 25 transfers?
Right, Title 25 transfers, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's good, clarify for the record.
That's good, yes, that's what I meant, okay.
Okay, I'll just.
And still, still maybe have it on the website?
Yeah.
But, but, for now, quit spending money on advertising it.
Because that way, I feel it's boring that we've covered the advertising end of the soul.
Yes.
That's definitely.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else, Vera, on that?
No, that was it.
Thank you, next is budget, or the agenda.
So, if I'm wrong on this, that's one, let's bring it front of the board, but I, you know, I was already told that, we must have forgot our training, so, I got a call from a guy in Sheridan, didn't know him, was offering some kind of a gravel gathering device that reclaimed the gravel in one swipe. My answer was, which I haven't done in the past, to say, look, I don't know, I see the video and it looks great, but you need to put it in front of the board, and let's see if the board thinks it's worthwhile. My thought process behind it, which I made very clear in my explanations, was, we were going to have Jim here anyway, and instead of sending it to Jim, who's already shorthanded, he's here, they can discuss it or figure if it's even worth it or not, he kind of proposed a similar thing here, which he told me he was going to propose, in fact, I told him to submit the quotes that he was looking at. But once again, we got to the point where it didn't get added to the request, it was three weeks early, I was very nice in my things, until I got to the point of, was told that this is how we do things, and make sure there's no contact with them. We, we do not need to ask the clerk who we communicate with, I sent it to you guys to put on the board so everybody could see it, and, once again, and then, this past week, last week, I got a message, do you want to add anything to the agenda? Yeah, sure did, I wanted to put that on there. I think that at minimum, since you were on those emails too, you should, I mean, I got two opinions, or I got one opinion, we got another, I forwarded the emails to Jeremiah, who is available by phone, and we also forwarded to the trainer, I'll let Vera talk about that, but Jeremiah said, at very minimum, you should, you, you could have called and said, hey, the agenda's too full, do you mind if we put it on the next agenda? And that would have been, I would have been fine with it, I don't care, I just thought, you know, hey, maybe this could save us a lot of money on there, and I put it in there, maybe nothing, but I didn't want to spend three hours on the phone with the guy, put it in front of the board, and let the board decide, which I had been advised to do on many occasions before, so that's exactly what I did. I wasn't going around Jim, I called Jim after I seen he was on the emails, and he said, no, that's great, I would love your opinions on, I mean, that's great. We have to get that decided, because it's not the clerk nor the chairperson's position to say, that can't go on the agenda, or it can't go on the agenda now. So we went back through the training, Jeremiah agreed, just said he's available for any comments, and then I'll let you pick up the rest of that.
Well, Don called me because I've, you know, been in contact with Mary, and I went to the training, to, and, and we've had this discussion before, when I asked to put something on the agenda, so, I asked Mary, and I actually made copies for everybody to remind us, this is from the board training, that the chair is actually responsible for the agenda, you're not responsible to decide what's on the agenda, but you're responsible to make sure that we use our time in the best way we can, and if, say, he had something that wanted to go, he wanted it on there, but we didn't have time, you could have called Don and said, hey, we're really tight on time this time, could we put that off to next time? But we shouldn't be hearing that from the clerk, the clerk shouldn't be telling us if we can and cannot put something on the agenda, that should be coming from you. That her, her responsibility, what Mary, what Mary said is, the chairman is responsible for the agenda and should be ensuring adequate communication is occurring with board regarding building the agenda. The commissioners are elected and legally responsible for overseeing county government. The clerk should be in the loop in that properly advertising the meeting's agenda is the clerk's job, as well as ensuring that minutes are taken and available to the public. She does, doesn't determine the agenda or who can be invited to speak at the commissioner meetings, nor is it in her purview to screen who can be included on the agenda, she may have items that she may need to be added to the agenda, as, as would any other, others in the county, so that's, that was her, and she said, you know, to go back and look at the board training, and so I copied them off of everybody, just as a good reminder of things we need to do a little better, if you want to copy, and also the pages from the newest Robert's Rules of Order. I guess it's just a concern we have, if there's a problem with the agenda, myself, and I'm sure Don feels the same way, we'd like, we'd like to hear it from you.
Well, on that, on this one, I was just, instead of having the guy come down here, I was just having, running through Jim for, you know, if something was Jim interested in or not, you know?
Did everybody get copies?
And that's why, you know, I was just like, hey, I don't know, so I just wanted it on the agenda. So I just wanted it on the agenda and I had talked to Jim about it after the fact and he's like, I, I have a lot on my plate. I'd love to have something like that. I wasn't going to make any decisions on it because it's not my decision to make. And I told the guy, look, just come and, he says, I'll come down and give you a demonstration or whatever, put it in front of the board, um, which is what I thought we were going to be doing, or I, I have had to learn from that as well, so.
Just as an outsider looking in, you know, I read the email thread and I think there's some bad blood sitting behind some of that stuff and I, I don't know that I, and, and I'm not trying to defend either side here, I'm just trying to, this is what I was reading. I don't know that I really saw Becky say you can't be on it, but I also never said, saw that. She said you can be on it. I think part of it might have been a poor path of, of communication that took place to, and maybe then, which resulted in some feathers getting ruffled. I, I don't know. I, I guess, I, that's the way I looked at it and I thought, you know, we're all bigger than this. This is a weird avenue. I don't recall this ever happening in the past, serving on the board, but it's just, that's the way I took it. I, so I stayed out, I, I mean, you know, I don't want to really get involved with that, but that's the way I took it. I, I don't know that anybody's really guilty of anything in this situation. I think that some feathers got ruffled and people started doing this and that's the way I saw the email chain.
And I agree with that. But we've gone over this once before and there has been some miscommunication. And so I think possibly from now on, instead of us emailing Becky saying we want this on the agenda, we should, we should email it to Ed and say, Ed, I want this on the agenda, because he's the one that should be making sure we have time to do that. And I realize she types it up for you, that she's involved, but perhaps that's the way that we keep this miscommunication from happening.
And maybe as a caveat, it just add her and Ed so that it's not a directly from Ed to, you know, it's, this is an idea coming to both of you and Ed, you need to look at this and, and.
Okay.
I mean, or everybody, if I, if I juncture. I mean, I just, I, I don't want to jump and say that somebody's guilty here, I, because I understand.
I don't think nobody's guilty, nobody's innocent. That's, that's the way I would word that.
Yes.
Don.
I would agree with Commissioner Todd. The reason why I sent it to the board was after having conversations with him, just put it to the board. I don't know the guy, didn't care, and I even put in my emails that I don't even know if it's valid. I just put it in front of the board.
And that's why I relayed that to Becky, you know, it's like, I'd rather have it run, you know, something like that is running through Jim first, then if, and if he wants it, yeah, I, there's no problem doing that.
Why assure you Jim does? Um, after he talked to me, he was like, I've heard, seen him too. I don't know if it works, but if we can save some on gravel. The, of course, a video looks amazing, so I'm like, I appreciate your video, but put it in front of the board, because I don't, you know, and I've worked on the highways on gravel and run those machines, so.
But with that, then perhaps you should have communicated to Don and said, Don, let's go ahead, would it be okay if we send this to Jim first?
I dropped the ball there.
Because, because we're the commissioners and she's here taking minutes. That, and she does things for us, she's, she types up the agenda, but it's up to us what's on the agenda, not Becky. And so it becomes a miscommunication then.
I dropped the ball. I take the full responsibility for that.
I don't even drop the ball, I just didn't see the harm in putting it on the agenda that early.
Well, I dropped the ball.
And I'm not angry with Becky, I just don't understand what's, what the problem is.
So perhaps from now on, would it be okay if we just, when we want to put something on the agenda, we send it to you?
Yep, then I.
Okay.
That would work.
What do you think about that?
I'm fine with that. I just, you know, the confusion was, is we, I thought we had talked about it before, add it to the agenda or don't add it to the agenda. We want it in front of the board or do we want an individual taking time to do it? I, you know, I'm not, it's not fault, it's, I want to understand it so that we all agree on it.
Okay. And it was really good actually for me even to go back and, and read, go back through some of that board training we went through. It went, it went so fast that day. Um, man, there's some good stuff in there.
Okay.
So.
We want to do business, insurance.
So unfortunately, our insurance for our vehicles, our property, and heavy equipment has gone up substantially. Last year, we paid sixty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This year, it is two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Hopefully by the fifteenth, which is when it has to be signed by the chairman, it will be down a little bit more. Um, I've been working with, um, Jacob Finn, who is the new owner of ADI. He's been trying really, really hard to get it down as low as it can go. Um, the reason it is so high is we're in a high exposure to wildfires and hail. Um, I don't remember if it was last summer or the summer before, we had a lot of hail claims. So, um, that's why our insurance has gone up so much. Airport had a claim. Public health had a claim.
Library.
Library and the fairgrounds. And it was twenty-five thousand dollars as our deductible, and unfortunately, it's not per event, it's per building.
Will there be a claim for the fairgrounds wall? Or is that something we're fixing ourselves or, because that was totally destroyed.
Nothing has been, um, turned in.
I was just wondering if that was.
And I don't know as if what, if we have what insurance.
And that would be right on the verge of probably turns in thirty thousand, we turn a twenty-five, a twenty-five dollar or twenty-five thousand dollar deductible into a five thousand dollar claim on top of it.
Right. Well, I was just curious if that was involved in that.
Yeah, no.
And their last incident where someone hit the building there, they never got me any of the information on that. They never got me the sheriff's, um, police report. They never got me any of that, so that was never even turned in. Linda was working on that right before she was done. Now she was still trying to work on it even when she was done, but because she's no longer a Fair Board member, they're refusing to give her any information, which I can see that because she's not a Fair Board member, but she was still trying to help us as far as insurance purposes, but she's pretty much wiped her hands of it now because they were being pretty ugly to her.
Do we have like a commercial fleet? Is, is, is like our insurance under a commercial fleet or?
Vehicles, some of it's covered under the LGOP, the local liability pool, but it's not as far as this stuff.
I'm just wondering if there's some other ways to look at it, a liability umbrella for part? I don't know. If there's other, I'm just thinking if there's other ways to look at our insurance, maybe how it's, how it's set up.
I don't know. That was, because, oh, what was her name?
Karen.
Karen Ackerman over at Upton was doing that. I was, I was literally surprised how large they were, how she was able to keep them over the years.
Well, I think it's because of the claims that we had and.
Well, and insurance has just gone up about fifty percent across the board, so.
I talked to, I ran into Jake at the co-op and he brought it up to me and he said that he's got one of the best guys in the business that has been actively researching that kind of thing to try to figure out for us if we can find something cheaper and he said, he's just absolutely not coming up with anything. And so I think, I think he's, for those who don't know Jake, he's a solid guy and I take him at his word. I, I think that what they're doing is probably legitimate and, and maybe they can get, he thought that they could get it a little cheaper, but, and maybe they will, but I don't know. But I think he, they are exhausting all avenues to try to.
When I went up to Idaho this weekend, on that Friday, they announced, I don't know if any of you guys saw it, that, that the major insurance companies were eliminating natural disasters from their insurance policies because of how much it costs, um, which, I mean, there's, it's going to be hard to get hail and all that in the future.
Well, they said with the number of, and I'm sure it's because we're in, we get the red flag warnings all the time for this area. He said even like other places in the state aren't having as hard a time as the northeast corner of the state because of the fire danger that we're in all the time. Yeah. Because I kept saying, is it because of Mall Camp? Can we get a separate one from Mall Camp? And he said, Mall Camp isn't even your problem. He said, it's your entire county. He said the town of Newcastle, he goes, and maybe it is because of all the trees, I don't know.
I'm sure it doesn't help.
Hmm.
And the hail we've been having, our last big claims were hail and just the area always gets nasty hail, you know, the black hills always get hailed.
So those are refunds that we may have to use to pay for them. They're sent in the general?
Yeah, they're, they're in, you know, like the rainy day fund or whatever.
And is it, it's, I assume it's these three here that she's got in these investments?
Hopefully she didn't invest them.
They're invested. So she told me that she just got the second tranche of this.
The tribal, we just got the second one, but it's dumped in as well.
But it's not, I think it's just sitting there still. She hasn't done anything with it.
Yeah, she has it, but it hasn't been invested yet.
So that's my thought process.
It's in the general fund, it's just not invested.
Yeah, that quarter million dollars. Maybe we should, uh.
Before it's invested.
Yeah, instead of touching those others just yet, even though we have to have them spent by twenty-twenty-six, maybe we tack that one first.
So the other, we don't have to have spent.
Don't at all.
There is no stipulation. There's absolutely no stipulation. That's ours a hundred percent.
We did it as revenue, loss of revenue replacement.
That's why we had agreed to get it in the general fund, because by having it still in our budget, it was still showing in and Paul said it should have went in right away.
So with that being said, can you have a resolution of some sort for next meeting?
I can, if you guys give me the permission now, I can just, but I thought if, if you don't need to have the discussion and you guys tell me that's what you want me to do, I can have the resolution prepared for the next meeting.
We have to have the sign before our next meeting. We have to have it signed by the fifteenth.
You guys just need to give the chairman permission to do the insurance by the next meeting. The ARPA can have the resolution by the next meeting. Or by the fifteenth. This insurance just has to be, where we pay for it, that's.
Yeah, I guess that's what, we have to have the policy signed by the fifteenth. Then we can, at our next meeting, we can figure out where, how we pay it, whether we take it out of that.
Which is, I think, next Friday or maybe.
Have to have it out, they'll take it out of the ARPA program.
The fifteenth, so it's Friday.
Yeah. The Friday before next meeting, we have to have the policy signed or we will be lapsed into coverage.
There'll probably be three different ones, three different policies. There's the, um, there'll be the vehicle policy, the building policy, and the.
Heavy equipment.
I said heavy equipment, but it's like the, um, gosh, what does he call it? The, um.
Off-road?
Not off-road, it's like water, not water.
So if we give him permission to sign that and then you have a resolution ready and we can put that to a quarter million dollars into.
At the next meeting.
Yeah.
Budget adjustment. Let me see what you call that.
Do we put it into?
Ouch, that hurts.
Well, do we want to put all the quarters million in, you know, or do we want to do? We know we need ten thousand, a little over ten thousand, like twelve thousand this year for the Office 365. We need seventy thousand, roughly, little, not quite seventy thousand for this.
Inland marine.
In, yeah. Yeah, that's our, that's the schedule. That's the, the things they have all listed.
Inland marine, yeah, it's like the, um, scraper, dozer.
Stick rip now.
Yeah. All of that stuff.
So we're looking at what, sixty? How many, the increase is going to be? Oh, you budgeted one fifty.
So I budgeted one fifty and the total's two nineteen, so I need a budget adjustment of sixty-nine, eight, eighty-three.
So we got the ten thousand in office.
Yeah, so looking, we got twelve thousand for 365 between the initial cost and that. That's twelve thousand. Seventy thousand, roughly seventy thousand in insurance, so that puts us at eighty-two thousand.
Forty-eight hundred for the, just for the first and then six hundred a month off.
Seventy-two hundred. What was our third one we talked about today on the increase?
Generator, public.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was ten-five, he said.
Two oh one.
Ten-five oh one.
So let's just put.
Was the one that he already had. It was hoping to get a quote or some control.
That'll put us at like ninety-two thousand.
And what's in there?
Two hundred and one thousand.
And then put the rest in.
Or just, or do like a hundred thousand into financial admin and pay that out of the financial admin?
Yep.
That will, that'll give us a little cushion for some extra stuff that's going to pop up because like with the sheriff's department on that part there, that'll give us a little extra.
That should put all the fire, and we're going to have to give a little bit to the fairgrounds.
Yeah. And that'll take care of, see, put all the fires out.
Go on.
Just transfer that to.
All of that into?
Just do a hundred thousand. I would say do like a hundred thousand into financial admin, then we'll pay these bills out of that.
I made a motion that Becky prepare a resolution to move, to place the hundred thousand dollars worth of the second tranche of the tribal funds into financial admin.
Second. We have a motion, proper section, to authorize the clerk to prepare the resolution, transfer the hundred thousand dollars out of the tribal funds into financial admin for our next meeting as a budget adjustment. Any other discussion?
And we'll know, those numbers ought to be more specific, so we'll have an idea.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that'll give us a little cushion, a little, have a little spell over, but we are sure got our bases all covered for them three bills.
Did you draw a motion or a motion?
Not yet.
Okay. Making sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing on, hold in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Ouch.
So now you need a motion to approve the chairman's signature on the.
Insurance.
Insurance. We know you have that.
As soon as possible, hopefully today.
So could you email it, like if anybody wanted to come down and look at it and then?
I'll just send it to you guys before I have Ed sign on.
Yeah, we'll make sure everybody gets to review it.
So you just made an official motion?
Not yet. But I could, if, I'd make a motion for the chairman's signature upon the board's being able to review it on the insurance, new insurance. carries.
Insurance renewal.
Renewal.
We have a motion, proper section, to authorize chairman's signature on our insurance policy renewals after everyone has reviewed it via email. Any other discussion?
Um, to avoid doing business out of the email thread. To avoid doing business out of the email thread.
You can send them individually. Send them in a group.
Yep. Send everybody individually, respond back individually if they have concerns. Any other discussion? Hearing on, hold up a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold up a vote, say nay. Motion carried. Fires are all put out.
Yeah, I'll deal with that. What about this?
Oh.
So, you're going to...
Put off the blocks now.
Could you adjourn?
Oh, we need to adjourn.